Okay.
But is that all set on?
Yes.
Okay, okay, good evening, everybody. I'm calling the meeting to order. And before we begin, given that we are also online, I would like to ask the town manager to announce the press calls.
Yes, sorry, bear with me, folks. Should have it set up now for folks to be able to log in. And we have a live closed captioning working as well for those who are joining us to be able to follow along that way. If you have a question, you can use the raise hand function on Zoom or also send me a message. I have it set up that you can directly message me here. We have a few folks joining us in the room as well. So those who are joining us remotely, can't see the audience, but we've got a handful of people joining us here today. I am going to try to set it up so that folks that are not directly involved in the conversation, I'll turn off your video so that it's easier to follow. But as I said, if you have a comment to make, use the raise hand function, message me. And if we get interrupted in some way that makes it impossible for us to carry on, we'll just close the Zoom meeting. We'll disseminate new login information and continue on so we can carry out our business. So thank you in advance for hanging with us through any technical issues, but otherwise.
Okay, thank you. So we will begin with our public comment period if any resident or guest wishes to make a comment. And I, okay, sorry, go ahead. Remember to say your name and your street.
Thank you. Please, my name is Barry Levine, resident with the town of Somerset. To raise a procedural point about the agenda and then ask the commissioner of the council to address this now in the public comments time or at the moment, I know the agenda has time allocated for approval of the agenda. I can speak to this issue then or not. No question.
All right, is this, I assume this is regarding the item, the application.
The application of James Alford.
So, so I think that you, why don't we wait until closer to that hearing? Because this, this, this period is really for public comments, not necessarily addressing applications that are on the agenda. So we'll, we'll make an opportunity for you to, to address those issues.
Well, I want to address the issue of whether this should be on the agenda in the first instance. I want to object to the agenda either. And so I asked.
Well, you can put that on the record, but, but it's, this is the opportunity to make a comment, but this isn't the opportunity to get a response from anybody.
I want to address the agenda.
Well, you're welcome. You're welcome to do that.
You're going to run the meeting.
Yeah, you're welcome. You're, you're welcome to do that.
Should I do that now?
Sure, why not? Why not? Go for it.
This is an important procedural point. And it's, we've written a memorandum to the, to the town raising these issues and setting forth the basis for our objection. Briefly, I'd like to say that this matter was formally addressed and decided conclusively at the council meeting on September 6th. And the application was denied. Now, the applicant apparently displeased with the decision, has asked the town accommodated, apparently agreed according to an email that I received from Mr. Fowler that the proceeding of September 6th is deemed withdrawn. An application can be withdrawn only if action was taken on it. Here, here it went to decision. The application was filed in July. It was moved by the town staff. It was deemed to be completed by our manager. This was given to the town and to the neighbors. It was placed on the agenda for September 6th. The council formally convened, evidence was taken, objection incurred, the record by the mayor was closed, and the council action was taken. It ripened into a final decision. Just that it cannot magically be raised, it cannot be deemed to be withdrawn by real or even imaginary fiat or decree. The code provides for review, procedure for review, given review, appeal, exactly as code one, as the provision of code 112-NC provides. And I'd like to just read one sentence in part. Any person agreed by the decision shall have the right to petition for the judicial review of the decision of the town council to the circuit court of Montgomery County. It's not a right to adule. That's a right to appeal. The agreement does not get aduled. Cannot get undone what was done. The county code also provides that the town is required, required to make findings of fact and conclusions of law after, after such a hearing. It provides that within 40 days of the hearing, and I quote, "The decision shall be in writing if the decision includes a denial of the application, as was the case here, in whole or in part, or if an objection was raised by an interested person, as was done, and yet the findings of fact and conclusions of law shall state the town council's findings of fact and conclusions of law." That was not done. And it's not optional. It's under the code that was required. No.
Okay, Mr. Levine, let me ask you a question. So what you're testifying now, that is based on what you've already submitted to the council.
Yeah, I just have a moment.
I understand, I understand. But all I'm asking you is, is what you've already said, information that you've already provided to the council.
Well, in substance, I, as I said.
Okay, 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 thank you. So I need to ask the town attorney, because this is related to an application. Although he's questioning the agenda. So, and we don't, we don't provide an opportunity when the agenda is discussed to, for public comment on the agenda. So how should we handle this testimony?
So I would recommend that this argument be raised as a preliminary matter at the variance hearing, rather than now, when the council's determining the agenda. The, the council's determination of what to put on the agenda or the consent agenda is not subject to public debate. That's a question for the council. But when the variance hearing is called.
Right, okay. So, Mr. Levine, so, what, what we will do is before the agenda item is taken up, because council members have raised some questions in advance to, to us about the appropriateness of the item being on the agenda. So when we, so, you know, ordinarily, we start the hearing and we have both sides present. The staff makes a presentation, then the applicant presents them in public comments. But in this case, and we've done this before, we're going to have a prelim, we're going to have, like you have before, you know, preliminary issues, and we will give you the opportunity to comment at that time.
That's, that's the ruling of the council? That's fine.
Yeah. So you'll, you'll have the opportunity to.
Case law.
You'll. Yeah, that may be more appropriate, because, yes, okay. But I do want to state that you're, the letter that contains, I think, most of the information has, is on the record already.
And I appreciate that. And I understand that the members are busy folks. And when they get something in the middle of the day of the hearing, sometimes they have a hard throw in and, and a summary of those points, I think is probably useful.
Okay, well, you'll have, you'll have the opportunity. You have the opportunity. So thank you. Is there anybody?
Oh, I'm sorry. Was there something? There was somebody in, in the meeting as well, but.
Go ahead. Well, as, as, yes, as the, as the town attorney as well, we will have preliminary matters. We don't, we don't often do that, but we have in the past. But in this case, when, when the issues are read, because council members have already raised issues to, to staff and town attorney, and that will be discussed, and then there will be an opportunity for a hear, a public hearing on, on the matter of whether it will be on the agenda. It would, so when the agenda is voted on, it will be on the agenda, but then the council can consider what they're going to do with it. Whether they're going to hear it or not. So you got, I understand. Yes, yes. Yes, you will have, you will definitely. Okay, I think there's somebody else.
Yes, Lucy Freeman, who would like to make a comment. She's joining us via Zoom.
Yes, oops, start my video. Wow. Okay, Lucy Freeman on Fallstone. I have three things. I hope to be very quick. The first is at the, about the 16-year-old vote at the meeting before the work session. I know the last time you met, you decided to hold the, the non-binding vote at the May election. So then I figure in June, there'll be a hearing, and then it will go to a vote in July, which will get us back to July of last year, when people then are on vacation. And so I wondered what your thoughts, the council's thoughts are about when will the vote be on the 16-year-old vote?
Well, the, first of all, the, the amendment to the charter has been introduced. And, but it, what's the, doesn't have to be voted on in, within a certain amount of time?
So the, the council's asked for an advisory referendum.
Right.
And, but recall, that's going to be placed on the.
No, but unlike legislation, a charter amendment doesn't die.
Correct.
Okay, so Lucy, the charter amendment has been introduced. So at any time, I guess after the referendum takes place, then we, you know, the mayor sets the agenda. So I guess my plan would be that if the, the refer, the non-binding referendum is in May, we will, I will try to put the consideration of the charter amendment at the next meeting thereafter.
So that'd be June.
That would be my, that would be my plan.
Okay, okay. That's better than July.
Remember what the procedure is. The mayor can set the agenda, but the council president can object.
Yeah.
So we'll wait and see.
Okay, secondly, you know, pickleball. I hear about pickleball all the time in the newspaper. There were just two reviews of two books on pickleball, and then it's on TV, and it's ESPN. It seems to be everywhere. I even heard it on the quiz show, Wait, Wait, Don't Tell Me. So whatever happened about pickleball in Somerset?
Your answer? No. Well, pickleball, I, so pickleball, that, that proposal did not pass the council. And what I would guess is that during the next budget session is when it will be the time to raise that. But we don't have, we don't have any funds in the budget this year to construct a pickleball court.
But so the council voted, said, voted to have no pickleball in Somerset?
The, the, the council vote turned down the, the trial pickleball program.
Okay.
About six months ago.
Okay, I had forgotten that.
But I'll, but I will call you at another time and further brief you on that.
Okay. It was my understanding that you're going to be engaging with some of the residents who are interested in pickleball to ask them to.
To come up with another proposal.
So with the proposal and work more with the neighbors who could be impacted by the noise of pickleball in different locations being considered.
So the, so the group that was advocating, I'm glad the president refreshed my memory. The group that was advocating for pickleball has not really reconvened. And I think a lot of the, the pickleball players are looking at alternative places to play, such as the YMCA, for example. And I think they're putting it at the Lawden Center. Is that right?
No, it's already, it's been at the Lawden Center for a long time.
Yeah, so I'm not really sure. So I will, I will be happy to chat with the leadership of that group and get back to you.
Okay, my third question is, actually, Matt could remember better than I can when this happened, but late June or early July, a big tree fell down across the end of the pool and, and bent the fence. So then somebody, somebody cut down the branches that were sticking out everywhere, and they're like yard-long branches that are piled up at the pool. And so, you know, and then a rope was put across. So people, you've all seen this, because I think all of you have been down there at the non-ingenarian or the new residents' parties, or the dog swim, or just swim, do laps, whatever. But, so I heard that that tree was going to be removed once the pool closed. And that's now been a while, you know, getting like seven weeks ago. I feel this is dangerous, because any agile person, even a not very agile person, could just climb on the tree, go across the bent fence and jump down into the area with the pool covered. Now they could step out there and get caught underneath it. I think the term is, it's an attractive nuisance or something like that. So I was wondering, I heard that, I think it's dangerous, and and we're supposed to have a fenced pool. So I was wondering, since I had heard it was going to be immediately when the pool closed, when this tree is going to be removed?
Okay.
And the fence is going to be repaired.
Let's let the town manager answer the question.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll follow up with the tree company. I think they had, they had put off scheduling major tree removals around the pool. And they set their schedule several months in advance, because we had originally been planning to do some construction work at the pool. But obviously, now that's not happening. I'll follow back up with them and make sure that that gets done as soon as possible. Thanks, Lucy.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I feel it's dangerous. Okay, thank you. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Is, did anyone else?
That's it for now.
Okay, thank you. Did, did, oh. Please verbally say your name.
Says on the agenda that at 9:10, there's a discussion slash motion about ordinance 9221, which I understand to be the ordinance that, among other things, makes some of the proposed changes to the variance procedures, moving the minimum reasonably necessary language and setting forth a change of procedure about variances. But it doesn't say that it's a public hearing.
That's probably a mistake. That's a mistake. Sorry. You're, you're talking about number.
Nine, at 9:10 PM. In fact, the public hearing on that, or on that proposed ordinance.
Yeah, that should say public hearing motion.
Thank you.
What did I put there? All, all, all these items are public hearing motion. Thank you for pointing that out. Is there anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. May I also remind everyone, please, this is the first time we've had so many such an audience. Make sure you sign in your presence. It's on the record.
I was also, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just very quickly, for folks in the audience, in the future, we'll, we'll continue to get better with the technology and probably get an actual microphone. But I did get a message just asking if you can please enunciate, because you're a little bit further away from our microphones. So just for, for the, so the transcripts is good and people listening online can hear.
We're still working on the sound. Do we have, we now have microphones for us. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
We approve the agenda as.
Is there a session?
I just had one quick question. So on the agenda. Wait, I can't find it. Oh, it says, um, at 7:40 to consider approval of a permit application submitted by Amy and Jeff Buto. I thought that we did that last time.
It's a little bit confusing. So they, they had a permit, and then they, they, they originally wanted to do, if you remember, they had kind of a lattice work and a little cover over it. And they decided, never mind, we don't want to do that. We're not going to go through a variance process. And then a couple of months later, which was last month, or September, they did, they decided, we are going to try for that variance after all. The variance was approved. So now they've gone back to Montgomery County, got the permit. So they need to revise their permit with us to officially get.
So to follow up.
Exactly.
Okay, sorry.
No, that's, that's great. If I can modify my motion, it's to approve the agenda as modified to, to clarify that the adoption of resolutions are public hearings at 9:10, 9:25, 9:35.
Okay, thank you. Yes, yes, we'll correct. Is there further discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor? The next item is consideration of the consent agenda. And will you please, when you make your motion, will you please take off the nomination of Daria Fuentes, because that needs to be voted on separately? So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We approve the consent agenda with the deletion of Dario Fuentes.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Now, the next item is the consideration of my nomination of Dario Fuentes of Cumberland Avenue as chair of the swim team committee. So that needs to be modified, that he is nominated to the committee to fill an, the unexpired term of Jeff Mascott. And then to be chair of the, of the committee, of the swim team committee. So could you make that motion? See, he, see, he isn't on, he isn't, he isn't on the committee. He isn't on the committee now. So I can't make him the chair unless he's on the committee.
Dario Fuentes, as chair of the swim team committee, to be nominated to take Jeff Mascott's position.
Well, we need to nominate him first to be on the committee.
I nominate him to be on the committee, and then after that, to take the place of the chairman.
Okay, is there a second? Is there, so you, you all understand, so what Council Rabar was talking about is that he's not currently on the committee. So I can't make someone, I can't nominate someone to be the chair if they're not on the committee. So just to clarify that. And then the term ends at the end of this year. So he will be renominated for a three-year term, starting in January, and nominated as chair. Remember, the, the terms of the chair is one year. The term of the member is three years. So is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, thank you. The next item is public hearing motion to consider approval of a three-year contract with Mulhern Tree Experts for snow removal services in the town of Somerset, as recommended by the town manager, Mr. Town Manager.
Um, so we are joined here by Ed Mulherin, actually. So thanks, Ed, for, for joining us. Mulhern Tree Experts has done snow removal in our town for, correct me if I'm wrong, Ed, but at least 15 years. And so our contract was up, we went out to bid. Mulhern continues to do a good job, put forth a good bid, and I wanted to highlight that they also carefully considered our own requests for environmentally friendly practices and implement, and putting that into our snow removal. And so they are, they've worked out an agreement to subcontract to be able to provide a brine solution, which will cut down on our salt usage hopefully this winter. And Ed is here to answer any questions, but I will heartily recommend that we sign a new contract with Mulhern Tree Experts.
Ed, did you want to add anything?
The only thing, I did want to talk a little bit about the brine. The brine is not necessarily going to save you on, on any follow-up services once the snow starts. Simply because depending, a lot of things can happen. The brine is pre-treatment when the pavement is dry, but before anything happens. So possible things that can happen are, number one, you have rain before snow or ice. That then washes it away. Second thing is with the brine, the forecast can change, we get nothing. You spent money on the brine. The third thing is if we have a lot of snow or a lot of ice, prolonged cold periods. It's not as, you have to see how it is, is, is good in certain scenarios, and it's kind of, kind of useless in others, quite frankly. And so it's a little bit of a gamble, you know, to, to do as a pre-treatment. I just want everybody to think that the brine is going to be all end all, it's going to save on blowing in or the spreading of salt or something like that. Because again, you've got to remember, every event's different. Forecast what actually happens, what happens after the fact, weather, ice, temperature, and all that kind of stuff. You know, so taking an example, let's say they're calling for an inch or two, and it's going to be 50 degrees the next day. The brine is probably going to save you some money and, and cause me to have to put down less salt on the road, right? But if we get six inches of snow or ice or whatever, and it doesn't get out of the 30s for the whole next week, I don't think it's a good hard thing to, to figure as far as when to deploy the brine or not. I just want everybody to think.
Okay, thank you so much, Ed, and thank you for your great service in town. Council president, sir, if you have any questions?
No, no questions, thank you.
Councilor Bar.
If you were not using brine's pre-treatment, would you, would you use salt as pre-treatment?
I've never done any pre-treatment in town.
So brine would be a new thing as a pre-treatment?
I wasn't doing pre-treatment. I mean, some people do use rocks as a pre-treatment. I just, I don't think it's necessary, and I don't think maybe overall impact it provides to, to gives you that much advantage, excuse me, environmentally or, or financially. But again, you know, yeah, every event's different, so it might all.
Some of the time it will, and some of the time it won't, just what you can.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Halloway. Any other questions?
Um, when it comes to the brine, I think go to the brine for a second. How would we make that decision that we do and Matt coordinate before a snow event is coming?
Oh, this, okay.
Okay, because then we can all weigh in. I think we want to spend money to do that. Thank you. Thanks for your.
That might be the way to do it, is coordinate with them, and then they distribute to the mail or post up to you guys, and then you all, I don't know.
And I just want to thank you for your good service, because I hear you clearing my streets as I'm sleeping at night. My friends are very jealous.
Well, I might add that one thing that, in the past, we've had two council members that have coordinated with the manager. So perhaps at a work session, that can, that can be discussed.
Mr. Barber and I, we'd get together to talk about whether or not salt was necessary on the sidewalk.
It was providing guidance, because there had been a concern that a lot of money was spent on things. Because some years we've had, you know, huge snowfalls and the cost of the sidewalk is quite a bit. So, so we'll, we'll put that on the work session. Councilor Rabar, do you have any questions?
So brine, okay and safe for dogs?
It's all salt to agree, even the kind of ice, snow products that we use on sidewalks have some degree of security. So So the idea though is that you, you put it on when the pavement is dry, it dries up, so the exact answer is I'm not sure. But I would think that it probably hurt the dogs, the worst brine or salt or ice, whatever, it went, went moist. So I would say, and it dries pretty quick because it's kind of a thin layer that goes down. I, I don't know. It's the true answer.
I believe, or didn't the Environment Committee recommend this?
Yeah, I, I think if, in, in, in this, in the instances when we can pre-treat and not use salt and Ed sort of laid out, there, there might be certain weather factors that determine whether or not that's the best course of action. But in those cases, the brine solution uses about forty percent of the salt that just regular salt. So it's still not very good. It's still salt, to Ed's point, but it's, it's less salt if that's already used.
Okay, but it's not like toxic to dogs or anything?
I mean, no more. It's, it's the same salt that's in, that's used for road salts. It's not, it's not like it's table salts, you know, it's.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Town Manager, are there comments or questions?
Uh, no, not at this time.
No, in the audience. Okay, Council, prepare to make a motion.
Yes, move that we approve the three-year contract with Mulherin Tree Experts for snow removal services in the town of Somerset as recommended by the Town Manager.
Is there a second? Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed. Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, Ed.
Yes, sir.
I think the, I believe the Council President
Yep.
has a motion to make.
So the, the summer request that the council go into closed session for some legal advice pertaining to one of the matters in the hearing tonight.
Is there a second? Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed. Okay, thank you. Okay, so to the audience, we need to clear the room for a brief period and, um,
I'm thinking five minutes or so.
Then to our expert assistant, Lynda Williams.
And for those on Zoom, I'm just going to put you in the waiting room for now and let you back in when we enter back into open session.
Is it okay for us, Sam?
Yeah.
She keeps her headphones on.
She's recording it all. So I spit it tomorrow.
Lynda, you fired him with some?
Thank you, everyone, for the delay. Uh, the next item is public hearing motion to consider approval of a tree removal permit submitted by Deena Levine for the removal of a fifty-six inch Southern Red Oak property located at forty-eight oh seven Fallstone Avenue as recommended for removal by the Town Arborist, Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, um, so just a reminder to the council that this is on the agenda because of the, you, you might remember that our code used to be if it's fewer than three trees, there's an administrative permit that can be granted. But the code was amended so that if there's a total diameter of trees being removed, regardless of the gross number of trees, that it would go before the council. So that's why you have a couple of permits here, permit applications, I should say, that, um, previously would not have gone to the council. Um, so Dr. Feathers with us and also the applicant, Deena Levine is also with us to answer the questions.
They don't, they don't want to say anything.
Uh, Ms. Levine, uh, I, I know you're here in the meeting. I wanted to give you an opportunity to introduce yourself and add anything if if I omitted anything important.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Um, I had a tree man come to my property because some branches fell and I wanted him to check some of the trees and he highly recommended that the tree in the front of the house has to be cut down. Uh, uh, I don't necessarily want it to be cut, but I think according to him, it's, it's dangerous, the, the way it is. And it's, so he highly, highly recommended it. And since I don't understand that much in trees, and I think that the Town Arborist also thought that it is necessary, so that's why I'm asking for it.
Okay, thank, thank you so very much. Council, President, Sir, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Councilor Bar.
Are, are, are you thinking about planting another tree when this one goes?
Well, I have so many trees on my property. In the front, I originally was supposed to have only one cherry trees. And I, they, I said that if they want, they can put two cherry trees. So I have two cherry trees. I have an evergreen tree and I have another tree. I don't know, and in the back, you can come to the door, my backyard, it's filled with trees. So I don't think there's any more room for trees.
Okay. Senator, okay, Councilor Heller, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Rovak.
No, thanks.
Are there comments or questions from our residents or guests? Hearing none, are you?
Do, do, just do we hear Dr.?
Yeah, hearing, yeah, okay. Are you, are you prepared to make a motion? Council.
I move that we approve a tree removal permit uh, submitted by Deena Levine for removal of fifty-six inch Southern Red Oak at the property located at forty-eight oh seven Fallstone Avenue.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Thank you. The next item, public hearing motion to consider approval of a tree removal permit submitted by Dana Makker for the removal of a forty-two inch white oak at the property located at forty-seven twenty-five Cumberland Avenue and recommended for removal by the Town Arborist, Mr. Town Manager.
Thanks, uh, same circumstances essentially, uh, here. I don't believe, uh, Deena is with us, um, but.
Yes, I am.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I don't, okay, you're popping up as Abigail on here, so, uh, my apologies for missing you. Uh, go, go ahead, go ahead, Dana, if you'd like to introduce and say anything.
No, I already said it. I already was introduced.
Deena, not Deena.
No, no, no. I'm talking about Dana Makker.
Oh, okay.
So, thank you, thank you, thanks.
Bye-bye.
Uh, Council President, Sir, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Councilmember Bar.
No questions.
Councilor Heller.
No questions.
Councilor Rovak.
No questions.
Are there comments or questions from our, any residents or guests?
No.
Council, you prepared to make a motion?
Move that we approve tree removal permits submitted by Dana Makker for removal of a forty-two inch white oak at the property located at forty-seven twenty-five Cumberland Avenue.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I saw a bar first. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Thank you. The next item, public hearing motion to consider approval of a six-month permit extension requested by Monica Gomez and Guillermo Israelovich for the existing permit for the construction of a side addition at the property located at forty-nine hundred Cumberland Avenue, Mr. Town Manager.
Yeah, uh, this resident was granted a permit and, uh, their permit expires in December. They were delayed because of, um, some health issues, um, and I, I believe some supply chain issues, but Doug is joining us, I think. He believes that they should be able to complete the work, uh, which I think they have a deck to add on. Uh, they should be able to complete it in the next six months. Doug, I don't know if there's anything that you want to add to that.
Yes, uh, this is Doug. Uh, I would recommend that the extension be conditioned upon the applicant providing written verification that the county permit is still valid because that's over a year old also.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Council President, Sir, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Councilor Bar.
No questions.
Councilor Heller.
No questions.
Councilor Rovak.
No questions.
Mr. Town Manager, are there comments or questions from our residents or guests?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Council. You're prepared to make a motion?
I recommend we approve a six-month permit extension as requested by Monica Gomez and Guillermo Israelovich for the existing permit for the construction of a side addition property located at forty-nine hundred Cumberland Avenue.
Is there a second?
With the, to that, providing that the county permit remains valid.
Yes, thank you very much.
And you seconded too, right? Okay, thank you. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Thank you. The next item, public hearing motion to consider approval of a permit application submitted by Amy and Jeff Buto to construct a front stoop lattice and roof for the property located at fifty-five twenty-two Uppingham Street. Mr. Town Manager.
Uh, yes, so, um, this permit, uh, was approved, uh, in June, I believe it was. And, um, at the time, the applicant came to us, they're doing an addition onto their house. They were thinking about doing a, a lattice and overhang structure, decided against it at the time. But after thinking it through, decided to go ahead and apply for that variance. The council approved that variance in September. So now the applicant has gone back to Montgomery County, revised their permit and is requesting a revised permit from the council to do the work for which they were granted the variance.
And to Mr. Lowmeyer.
Doug, I don't know if you have anything that you would like to add to this.
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Council, President, Sir, do you have any questions?
I just want to clarify, so this is, there is a variance, I think, for this and the council has previously approved. I, I have no questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Bar.
No questions.
Councilor Heller.
No questions.
Councilor Circa, Councilor Rovak.
No questions.
Are there comments or questions from our residents or guests?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council, you're prepared to make a motion?
I recommend the council approve a permit application submitted by Amy and Jeff Buto to construct a front stoop lattice roof for the property located at fifty-five twenty-two Uppingham Street.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I think I saw Heller first. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed. Thank you. The next item, public hearing motion to consider approval of four variance applications submitted by James Alpie representing Rockwood's Capital for the property located at forty-six Grand Avenue. So before, uh, we begin this hearing, there is a preliminary request made by resident Barry Levine. And the way we're going to handle it is we would like Mr. Levine to again present his request briefly. Uh, and then, uh, we will, the procedure will be, we will take the request. Then we will ask the council, give the council opportunity to ask questions about the request. Then there will be a public hearing and the applicant and the interested party can comment on the request and then the hearing will be concluded and then council will deliberate and decide whether or not to approve the request. Okay?
So all that will be seen.
The hearing. So your request will be considered before. Okay, so you may begin, but please keep it brief because I think everybody knows.
I understand, yes, I know that. So I'm not going to repeat what I said earlier. Uh, I think it's useful and I was at the point of where I wanted to bring to the attention of the council, uh, law, uh, of this, uh, of this, uh, of Murrell. Uh, and in particular, we cited a case called SINKING, C I N T U E. Montgomery County Planning Board. It was decided by the special, uh, Murrell and Special Court of Appeals. So it's binding authority on, uh, on this court and, uh, this, uh, the court basis that dealt with what was considered, the motion is to reconsider, that is one way to construe with this reapplication. It's about a motion to reconsider the fact that it was denied in the first instance. And after collecting all these cases, the court said, and I quote, see, may grant reconsideration in accordance with the statute or rule providing for reconsideration. Or in the absence of such statute or rule, here there is none, based on fraud, surprise, mistake, or inadvertence. That's the law. The law is that it may not be reconsidered unless there is, in the absence of a rule or statute, and there is no statute. So in the absence of a statute, it has by surprise, mistake, and inadvertence or inadvertence. And here, uh, there is no allegation, nor could there be surprise, mistake, inadvertence. And, and, uh, the, the court went on to say, uh, instructs that the council may not, and I quote, merely change its mind. Not merely change its mind. It has to, it has to be brought to their attention, predicated on a showing of fraud, surprise, mistake, or inadvertence. All right, so, um, so therefore it should simply not be on the agenda. But even more so, this would be very inequitable. If we had lost, if they had granted council later on, please set that aside, deem it withdrawn, take from them their states as prevailing party. It, it, it is unimaginable to me that we would say, sure, we'll do that. Likewise, likewise, if, 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 uh, we proceed you and it's denied again, the variance is denied again. Should we expect a thing to come in again in December or January or February? Is there no end to this? Well, there is an end to this and the court, actually, and the code tells us where, where it ends. It ends once it's decided. The remedy is judicial review and the code tells us that judicial review is by judicial review by appeal to the Montgomery County Circuit. So I would say to you, in this case, sir, I know that you and indeed the most they have in, in this case, the most principal basis for reconsideration is about, i- is not changed at all. It's about the garage. This is principally about the garage, garage, and, and Mr. Chong said in his memorandum that is reflected on this, um, this agenda item. There is no change, unchanged from previous non-aberrant requests to submission or removal of the garage.
Okay, thank you. Council President Circa, do you have any questions?
Mr. Levine, you note that, um, there's no change to the garage. Um, what about the changes to three of the other four variance items?
Well, with respect to the garage, there's no change on that and if you can't change the, the garage, you can't put on a roof and just in the even roof is can't be done. So that follows. With respect to the porch, it is a one-foot change, one foot on this whole thing. I mean, it can't even be argued that it is a material change. Uh, so to the extent that one would imagine, you would hear, this is a material change. As was said, I must say, under passion within the letter, these are material changes that were carefully considered by, uh, by the applicant. So it is an appropriate application. She never mentions the fact in her letter that the garage was unchanged and the other changes, one foot on the porch is, is, is substantial.
Thank you very much.
Eight inches on the eight is really, obviously you can't grant variance for a eight on a, on a garage that doesn't have a variance.
This, by the way, is an eight-inch roof, an eight-inch roof. Now.
I, I have no further questions. Thank you, Councilor Bar, do you have any questions?
Right, um, I noticed that the facts on the ground have changed since the last hearing. In fact, because, uh, you had objected to the removal of the holly tree in the last application. You learned from the Arborists that that holly tree is in fact in poor condition and the applicants have agreed to replace it with another holly tree. Uh, the only way I can see that at this point is it is a new application because the facts on the ground have changed.
Yeah, and I I think that you misunderstand. There are two holly trees there. One is glorious and healthy, mature, healthy and glorious, about forty feet tall and totally healthy. The one that Dr. Feather said was unhealthy is one that was by a previous owner locked up and it's very injured. Uh, we sent pictures today to Mr. Chaloner about what happened to that tree. That's the one that is injured and is going to be removed supposedly. It's not the one we're talking about. The one we're talking about is glorious, big, full of cathy and it's very close to the house and this new footprint that they proposed to build. Dr. Feather said it would survive that. But our concern is that for sure, first of all, we weren't sure Dr. Feather understood because their papers say that they are going to expand the footprint. But they are expanding in that rectangle behind the carport and that will be directly into drip line of this beautiful American holly tree. So we want to make sure. Dr. Feather said it could survive that. But it's right in the way of the new second story, so it has to be locked off. The canopy will have to be, you know, mutilated. For me, once this building is built, that holly tree will then be very close.
So you're saying that the facts have not changed even though they are going to replace the holly tree on lot now that they were not going to do previous?
No, the one they're replacing is a different one.
Right, but the facts have changed. Do you agree that the facts have changed?
Not about the tree, not about any tree that is material to this at all. The the tree, the tree that is material, the one we've always spoken about, nothing's changed with respect to that.
Alright, even though Dr. Feather has said that tree could survive the um house being built?
But he he said that it could survive. Our position.
So we now got two facts then. He's he said that tree could survive the house being built and they are actually going to add a holly tree to replace a damaged holly tree. Do you see these as different from the prior application?
I don't honestly remember what they said. They said they had been silenced on the injured holly tree last time. I don't think they even.
The assumption the last time was the holly tree would have to go.
Yes, let me see if I can assist you, please. The application, there are two holly trees that that uh are issued here, two. Of them was, I didn't, the photograph on the paper, on the site plan paper, and it's been injured beyond restoration. That was there then, remains there now. We know why it is injured beyond restoration. We saw, we saw it being injured so as to become beyond restoration. And photographs to Mr. Chaloner of the of the injury taking place. So uh, we would want to see it. It's available to you now. With respect to the other tree, it's it's a, it's a soaring, beautiful American holly tree. That tree is as healthy as could be. Mr. Uh, Dr. Feather came and looked at that tree in his opinion, an opinion about which I have my own to write. Uh, in his opinion, it will survive the construction. Uh, I don't ever asked to look at the canopy of that tree. I would invite you.
Sorry, I have to disagree with you. That fact has changed because at the time of the last hearing was that that tree would be removed. It is clear now that the expert, and he is an expert, believes the tree can survive. That is a changed fact.
I don't think it's a changed fact. It's a changed fact.
I'm sorry, that's what you said.
Mr. Bar, Mr. Bar, please. Mr. Bar. Information, it's new information, information that was not available before or became available after the hearing.
That's exactly that.
And that's not this.
It is exactly that. I'm sorry, but that's exactly it. Dr. Feather looked at it and said it could survive. That is new information that came after the original hearing. That makes it therefore new.
It was, it was information asked for after the opinion, after the last hearing.
I'm sorry, I, you know, I I disagree with you. That it is not new. It is new.
Okay, so Counselor Bar, this is your opportunity to ask questions of the request, not to debate.
I understand. I understand. First of all, I I believe that it's, it says on the plans that if that tree is exist, is uh, that tree is um remained. So I forget what the languages. It said on the plans that that tree is going to remain. It said that before and it still says that. So Dr. Feather, and the concern we raised was really did not in any way go to the criteria for variance. It went to, our concern about this whole construction was that we thought it's not likely to survive. But we even, but it said, but the plans did not change. The plans say that tree is going to remain. That's the position that applicants take, that that tree will remain. We expressed some concern about that and we continue even after Dr. Feather, that's what he said. We still have concern about, but we think at the end of the day, the new owner will give permission to take down that tree because it's going to be this close to the house. So the limit seems to be, but nothing's changed.
Mr. Bar, I'm inviting attention to, okay.
So this is, this is up to the last questions. I've been, I've been, he, he asked your question, you answered it, and he.
But I, I can't convince him.
You'll have an opportunity, you'll have an opportunity in the public hearing to comment further.
Mr. Mayor. This is my chance.
Did, no, 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 no. This is Counselor Bar's opportunity to ask some questions about your request. He answers, no, he, he's, he has, are you satisfied with his answer?
I I I have clarified their position. I'm satisfied, yes.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Heller, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Counselor Roback.
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Now the applicant has an opportunity to comment on the request and you'll have an opportunity to.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Um, I actually.
Remember to identify your subject directly.
I think Mrs. Levine made a very important point when she said that the tree has nothing to do with the variance. You are here on a variance application. There are four variance pending, that variance request is pending. And the tree, it has been uh, the subject of so much discussion has nothing to do with the variance. We have offered a replacement tree elsewhere on the property because it was one of two issues that the neighbors had raised, who were trying to be sensitive to those concerns and deal with them. There's another significant change, another that has really nothing to do with the variance. We have offered two dry wells and said we would be willing to accept a condition that would allow the dry wells to handle not only all of the stormwater runoff from the roof of the proposed variance, but in addition to that, to make sure that we not leave the property the way it is, but in a better condition. With respect to a change to the variance, I don't know if you have a copy of uh the uh application justification letter. I will provide you hard copies in a moment, but I will uh point out in the application, the eaves have been narrowed on the front and side, reducing the variance for the front eave and reducing the oval square footage for the garage. Existing uh carport area has been reduced as well, reducing square footage of the carport area. The garage height has been reduced by ten inches. No variance was needed for garage height. But again, we reduce that to try and address some of the concerns that had been raised. Um, so the the pro, the project itself, the variance, the variance requests themselves have been modified. The application has been modified with respect to stormwater and landscape. So it's, I, it it's hard to understand how one could take the position that this is not a different application. I also want to stop just for a moment um about the St. Hugh case, which was a two thousand seven Court of Appeals case. You can't have a Montgomery County Planning Board, it involved a plan where the jury had denied that application on the basis that the master plan had recommended against certain bases. The applicant filed a request for reconsideration. The board had referenced the wrong side of I two seventy, it was quoting the master plan. The board did reconsider that application. The board said, we made a mistake in law when we denied it the first time and they approved the project. And Maryland's Court of Appeals said, that's an entirely legitimate basis for reconsideration and they supported the board's new decision. This is not a reconsideration. St. Hugh case has nothing to do with the issue before you. This is a new application. And the notion that the only recourse or the only opportune option for the property owner is to file an appeal with the Maryland County Circuit Court simply is not justified. It's not a justified position under the law. Um, the applicant couldn't have taken this case before. If the applicant had taken this case to court and then filed a new application, the judge would have said it's moot. I'm not going to hear a case that might be decided in a different way based on different facts in the record. The court is going to look at what actions before you and what was decided. I also want to point out that under Montgomery County law, a variance, there's no limitation on when you can file a new variance application or a modified variance application if one is denied. That contrasts with how the Montgomery County zoning code handles a special exception or conditional use application. The code in the county says if a conditional use application is denied, a new application proposing substantially the same development may not be filed within eighteen months after a final decision. This, the the town code does not have a similar provision. So this is not a reconsideration request. We are, we are not asking you to revisit the same application deterrence that you looked at in September. The St. Hugh standards for reconsideration do not apply to this case. There is nothing in the town code that would prohibit or uh preclude any kind of time limit on when the applicant can refer forward a new application. And for the half a dozen or four reasons that I've summarized for you and I won't repeat, this is a new application. There are a number of material changes. And so we think this is partly before you this evening for consideration of the variance and we absolutely take it up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Town Attorney. I think that I need to have, have the council have an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant and then I think I need to allow the Levine, the Levine's rebuttal before we close the hearing. Is that appropriate?
That's the standard procedure we've applied when the applicant goes first and we always give the applicant the opportunity for rebuttal. And this is a, you know, motion by initial parties. We wouldn't have to follow that, that same procedure. It would be up to the the council's discretion as to whether.
Well, but I agree with that. Yes. Okay, so I think, I think that I should give the council an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant. And then I think we need to give the uh Leves the opportunity to rebut the testimony, the the testimony of the app, of the applicant. And then we will close the hearing and we will see if there are any other interested parties wish to comment on the request. And then we will close the hearing and we will, uh, then you will debate amongst yourselves the request of both these. Okay, so Counsel President Serco, do you have any questions of the applicant?
I have no further questions.
Thank you. Counselor Bar.
Um, the changes in height of garage and in the uh length of the porch are very small. Do you see that the the, are these your major arguments for how the application has changed? Or if they aren't your major applications for how the are, how the application is, what are your major arguments for?
I think that you need to look at the changes in the context of the overall size of the variances that were requested. So they look like they're significant changes. But because the the variance requests themselves are so limited or modest, um, even a modest change in numbers is is a material change. Uh, the roof area is being decreased by eighty-five point three feet. The uh depth of the porch, the porch roof area is reduced by twenty-four point seven feet. Um, the eave has been narrowed, the project height has been reduced. So I I would, I I I take issue with the suggestion that these are are not material changes that we looked at in the context of the variance itself. Um, the additional, the the additional changes that are substantive are 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 offered to replace the rear porch tree and to do meaningful um um for damage in process of other beyond looking at otherwise factors. So I think they're, they're related. I think the variance requests themselves have changed and I think the context of the very large application has changed.
Do you have any further questions?
No.
Counselor Heller, do you have any questions?
No, I I I'm actually just puzzled, you know, um by by the changes because they're so little and I don't see how that really changes. Um, you know, what our decision was last time to this time. Because it, it's, it's so, you're right, there's, there's, you know, there's small changes, not less, my math isn't very good. You know, um, and um I respect your right to come back and, you know, with these changes and speak to us. But um, but I I just don't see, I don't understand why these are so significant to come back to.
Sure. And and um, if if you think back to the last hearing, the primary objections to the application were concerns over the holly tree and stormwater runoff. There, there was not a whole lot, uh, there, there were some concerns about light and air which we addressed. And I, I I don't want to get headrested, I don't want arguing variance um at at this juncture, but I do think that we it's, it's, it's a question of perception. If you look at the overall so of the variance that's been requested in our view, it's a, it's a wise request. And so if you're working with something small, it doesn't look like you're making a big change when percentage-wise, it's, it can be a big change in the absolute numbers. You know, if we come in with a variance that's four times bigger and you chop point five percent of that, it's a little more impressive. But we're starting with something that's very modest even.
I guess my, my, my question is, not my question, my comment really, and I made it the last time too. But in this case, now that I see how small these are supposedly, why can't you just design a house that fits within our code?
And we will address that in the context of, I I, I'm not having to answer it now, I just don't want to get ahead of us.
It's up to you.
I shouldn't have asked that. I'm sorry.
It's up to you.
We, we do have an answer for that and we will address it if we need to.
Do you have any further question?
No, thank you.
Counselor, right back.
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so Mr. Mrs. Levine, now you have a chance uh at rebuttal. And then after that, if any other resident or guest wishes to comment during this hearing on this request, then we'll close it and turn it over to the council to make a decision.
Okay, well, first of all, I think that um very clear, the the garage variance did not change. It's still a seven foot, seven point seven foot variance for the garage. Has not changed one, one millimeter. Um, it's a big variance. And when I spoke at the last hearing, I, the first thing I said about the variances is they do not beat the standard. It is not an exceptional, extraordinary or peculiar lot. It does not present practical difficulties under the law. Be reasonably necessary. And I said to you, I've written that up and you have it. So I don't, I didn't, I didn't spend a lot of time laboring that. So Ms. Roosevelt might be, Ms. Harry mentioned that I didn't, that I was focused on the tree. I did turn to the tree, but only after I made the fundamental and key points that the variance, they are not entitled to this variance under the law. Same position we'll take today if we have to do it again. We shouldn't have to do it again. It's a seven point seven foot variance. It's the same exact one they're asking for. Now, did they lower the roof of that seven foot seven point? Yes, they lowered the roof. It is still forty percent higher, we did the math. So it uses the carport is eight feet, eight point. Roof is about twelve feet high. So it's oh, just about forty percent, I think thirty-nine point something percent higher than the carport. So it's not, they reduced it a little bit, but it's still a substantially higher roof. They um, the tree, the tree is is in. They, um, the tree, the tree is impacted by this variance. And that's why it's impacted by this variance, which is going to result in granted in this building being built. And I will just say that our concern about the tree is that even if it were to survive the construction, Mr. Barr, we are confident that in the end of the day, it will be locked up, so we'll no longer have the can be able to have. And the new owner of the house, because they'll sell it, will say, this tree is too close to our house, it's got to go. And everyone here will vote, yes, they're right. So we fear that we will lose this tree. And we set forth today of this tree, it is beautiful. It's been there for, since Barry's been in the house for fifty years or pieces. It's, it's, it's a slow growing tree. It's got berries, red berries on it. It's a beautiful. And, and this for sure will impact it. So I, if I said that the variance is not about the tree, it's not true. The variance will definitely impact this tree and we're very worried about. But they're not entitled to the variance and it shouldn't be rehired again because it's already heard. Um, she says it's not, you know, she said the changes are material. They just aren't. Eight inches on the eve, it's not material. It's not material. And so they don't have it. They don't have the grounds. And it is a reconsideration. It's a reconsideration of what they've already asked for. Um, let's see.
Okay. Do you have any other rebuttal?
I have one in the supplemental. And, and that caused the issue not to be heard again. Uh, that even those who, uh, even those who voted for the variance or not to, uh, ought to vote against the hearing now without, without at least, without at least a material change to justify what was, uh, what they felt were called absent, a- absent fraud, surprise, mistake or inadvertence. It's not allowed against, uh, and, and as to whether or not these changes are material, i- i- on per event, they could not be considered material if, if the fundamental variance is about a variety.
Okay, thank you.
Should I just say one more thing? I do, this Rosenfeld having, I mean, if you, if you listen to what she said, the next month they can come in and say, now we've changed it. Now we've made the roof eight inches more higher or let, her roof higher. Now it's ready to keep on happening. And the other thing is, Mr. Barr, that that we spoke to.
Remember, you're addressing your rebuttal is to her, test really not to him.
I can't address the council member?
I announced what the process was, that you would have the opportunity to rebut the applicants test really not the council member on this request. Okay. Thank you. Is there, are there further, uh, comments or questions from, that I want on this request?
No, 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 nobody else has indicated.
Okay. I'm going to then close this portion of the hearing and turn it. I said you're allowed to make a comment on the request.
Other pass to hear is that? No, I come to these all the time. I listen to them and people bring stuff back all the time for council and council reconsider. I don't see why, this is just another time. My habit, forty-nine hundred plus the negative, resident. Um, I just, if the council can't for a year, I think that you guys are completely capable to hear something brought to you again. Like if you still agree that you don't want to, like, agree with the eight inches or the hall, you may be taking down. But that should be allowed. I hear, I've been here where somebody's come down four regarding an application for, for a house. You guys are allowed to rehear it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Is there, is there anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I will now turn it over to the, uh, council president to lead the discussion and the decision on the request.
So I, I thought this was an interesting challenge because, um, as the resident indicated, we, we have in the past, I believe, heard heard changes to proposals or revisions to proposals. At least in my limited time on the council's percentage, actually. This objection, but I think it's a very interesting objection. Um, and is the question is, are there material changes? Um, and, and my thought for the answers, I think that there are. I think there are material changes. I think they're very modest. I'm not sure if they would change my mind at all, but I think there are some changes that warrant us, merit us looking at it, at it again. Robin, do you have some thoughts, comments?
No, I, yes, I agree that there are material changes in this application. Making a new application. Uh, and we've also got new information from the other altogether in this new application.
Okay. Um, Timmy?
Um, even though it's, I see it is so similar. I still, I, I think we should give them the opportunity every year. Um, I think that just, I think it's a safe, fair, neighborly thing to do, quite frankly.
Okay. Tim?
Hmm. Well, I, I guess I didn't really realize that there was the one variance that doesn't have any change. Um, so, you know, I mean, I, I don't know why that would change, but I guess I'll listen again.
Um, okay, good.
Is it a very, very emotion?
Yes. So, sorry, let me get back to, oh, I don't have to refer to, sorry. Um, I, I move that the.
Well, maybe we should have a temporary assist you.
The motion could be to decline the request to deem the application inappropriate and to make a finding that either it is a new application and not a reconsideration, or it's a reconsideration that is allowed because there are material changes. Or both.
Well, but, uh, thank you very much, uh, Ron, but Matt, you indicated that this is at least administratively a new application. They've paid an additional fee, correct?
They've, they've paid a new variance fee for a new hearing. They've submitted a new app, a new written application and submitted new neighbor notifications to the adjoining and abutting properties for, um, the specific measurements that are before you today.
Right. So I, I would move that we, um, do not accept the applicant's position and.
Then, yes, right. Let, let Ron.
Yeah. Can you say that again, please?
Sure, sure. The motion would be to deny the request of the lean, the Levine's to deem the application inappropriate and to allow the application to continue to a hearing because it is a new application, not a reconsideration of the prior application.
Right. So I move that we decline the Levine's objection or concern and, uh, and proceed with a new application here.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none others in favor? So we will proceed with the hearing. So I guess I'm going to first, I will read the, uh, should I read into the record the whole, uh, the judge item?
Yes.
Okay, public hearing motion to consider approval of four variance applications submitted by James Alpie representing Rockledge Capital LLC for the property located forty-eight oh six Grantham Avenue. The applicant is seeking variances from section one-one-two dash fourteen C-one-C of the town code. The following variances are being requested. One, the eve of the garage enclosure would be located twenty-four point three feet from the property line. Thus, a variance of six point five feet is required. Note, this is a point seven inch reduction from the previously denied variance request. Yeah, that's seven, seven foot, sorry. The front, two, the front wall of the garage enclosure would be located twenty-five point six feet from the front property line, thus a variance of seven point seven feet is required. Note, this is unchanged from the previously denied variance request. Three, the eve of the front porch addition would be located thirty point eight feet from the front property line, thus a variance of three point five feet is required. And note, this is a one foot reduction from the previously denied variance request. Four, the front porch addition would be located twenty-eight point three feet from the front property line, thus a variance of six feet is required. Note, this is a one foot reduction from the previously denied variance request. Today is November seventh, two thousand twenty-two. This is a hearing before the Tana Somerset Council for variance application twenty-two eleven V-two to consider four variances from the setback requirements of the Somerset Town Code for the property located forty-eight oh six Grantham Avenue. The applicant, James Alpie, is also represented by his counsel, Michelle Rosenfeld and architect Luke Olson of GTM Architects. This hearing is being audio recorded. We ask that all speakers speak one at a time, addressing the council when called upon and to state their name and address for the record before making public comment. The hearing will observe the following order. First, the Somerset Town staff will present their findings and submit for the record a report on the application under consideration. Next, the applicant will present their application. Next, the Somerset Town Council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff relevant to the application at hand. Afterward, other interested parties will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or present comments to the council. Then the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony, after which the public comment period of the hearing shall be completed and the record closed. Finally, the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact and conclusions. The council may make a motion under permit decision. The town attorney will be asked to write a decision and the town manager will be asked to issue a permit with the conditions voted on by the council and enumerated in the town attorney's decision. We now begin this hearing with the presentation of the Somerset staff findings and reports. Mr. Town Manager.
Mr. Mayor, before we go to the town manager, may I also note for the record that the manager has created a Google Drive containing those items that have been entered into the record. And the manager provided the link to the Google Drive to the applicants. And given the parties' arguments related to the prior variance hearing, I believe the council is going to take administrative notice of the record of the prior hearing.
Thank you. Yes. Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, you may proceed.
Um, so I, uh, one of the items I included was, um, just a brief staff report. Uh, quickly go over. Just letting you know that the, the applicant submitted a completed application to our staff on October thirteenth. Included in the application was the narrative summary that's included for you, for the variance, including measurements of the new variances. The town's building engineering consultant Doug Lomire reviewed the application and confirmed that the measurements and numbers were correct. And the town arborist, uh, who is also joining us this evening, has reviewed the site plan. And then applicants seeking four variances that the neighbor, uh, excuse me, that the mayor's already enumerated. And notice of those variances, along with the applicant's summary and a site plan, was delivered to adjoining and abutting neighbors on Friday, October twentieth. To date, we've received two responses to the application notice. One, from the neighbors at forty-eight oh seven Grantham, who indicated by email that they supported the application. And another from the neighbors at forty, excuse me, forty-eight hundred Grantham, the Levine's, who objected to the variance application. Um, I, as Ron noted, I included in the, uh, Google Drive, email threads between the town hall and the applicant. So that includes Mr. Alpie, Mr. Olson, Ms. Rosenfeld, uh, town staff emails pertaining to this, uh, application and emails between the town hall and any objecting parties, I, the Levine's. Uh, and as, as, uh, town attorney and mayor noted, uh, the applicant previously applied for four variances from the council in a hearing due September fifth. And at that hearing, the council denied the four variances on the grounds that they did not meet the criteria of the town code. Just a reminder that the applicant isn't seeking a building permit, but is seeking a variance from certain provisions of the town code. Uh, so they haven't submitted a complete stormwater, stormwater drainage plan, nor has Montgomery County, uh, issued a permit, nor have they sought a permit from Montgomery County yet because they would, uh, like to hear from us first. Also, on page two, uh, included the section of our code pertaining to variances. I won't, I won't read it out loud here, just in the, just to save everybody the time, but it is there for you if you want. And I'm happy to read it if, if you'd love to. Um, I don't know if Doug has anything he'd like to add to, uh, my report.
I have nothing to add to what Matt just stated.
And, uh, told word, I, I think, uh, you're here as well. I don't know if you want to add anything at this point.
Uh, no, it's, I've, I've covered everything in the two reports.
Great. Thank you.
Does that conclude your report?
That concludes the staff report.
Yep. We will now have the applicant's opening statement and presentation of their application. Don't forget to identify everybody and go before.
Certainly. Uh, Michelle Rosenfeld, Cleveland Council, to the applicant. Uh, we have, uh, Luke Olson, the architect, Mr. Jim Alpie. The applicant is here as well, uh, available to answer questions. If I may, I have a copy of our statement of justification and plans. We will be referencing them. I think it would be easier if you have paper copies. I may approach you and give them out. I'd like to mention that the, I will come back with the larger case. Um, I'd like to mention that the letter of support uh, at the top is a letter of support from the neighbor who lives directly across the street. Second property, varies, and that would be.
So.
Uh, as I mentioned, the letter on the top from Ms. Olson, she lives directly across the street. There's another letter of support, um, from Mr. Steven Shapiro, who lives at forty-five oh zero Commonwealth Avenue. Both of those are in the record. We also have another one that we received. I only have one copy, um, and it's addressed to you, Mr. Circo. If I could just enter this to the record, it's from Evan, five-five-one-zero Greystone Street. So, um, there, there are three, three letters of support um, in reference on behalf of this application. So as I mentioned, um, the application has been amended. It has been amended to reduce the overall roof area. It has been amended to narrow the eve on the front side. It has been reduced in height by ten inches. There was no variance needed for height. But in order to address the question of light and air, we've been trying to reduce the massing, the height, the scale of the overall uh, variance request. The porch depth and the porch eve have each been reduced by one foot, reducing the porch area. The site plan has a replacement holly tree, the tree that will be removed. And we have proper, uh, dry wells that will accommodate not only the runoff, um, for the, uh, roof top, for the garage, but will capture additional runoff leading after conditions in a better condition than had before. I'd like to, um, ask Mr. Olson to walk you through the variances with a little bit more specificity. And then I will turn back to the need for the variance and why we, uh, why we didn't take the approach of really moving the center back.
Thank you. Uh, Luke Olson, GTM Architects. I would start with the garage, as you referenced in buying a garage and the location of the existing carport. I'm going to think with minimal impact to the mass of that location. Then we provided the new depth allowable essentially to be able to park cars in the garage in that location. And that is to do not change that. So like, there is a, uh, modifications to, and, um, as Levine's pointed out, we just hired the garage, we reduced the movie as much as we could as well, also reducing the height of the front porch. So we're, we're kind of using it to, to reduce the depth, the overhangs and the height to, um, make minor modifications that in some pool ours. It's also worth mentioning that in the previous hearing, there was some talk about lighting there and seeing through this carport. We've provided some additional floors that show the existing conditions there, especially when a car or two cars are parked in that. It's primarily a part of the structure. So it's not meant to be seen through. As when that vehicle is parked there, there is going to be through that space, especially when you consider it's spring when a car can be lighted, as well as the, the last panel that exists on the left side of that garage. Especially in the closed since that cause, the porch, you know, it's bad as a senior asked and the right side of it, not projecting a little further, that would be bad for the front wall of the existing house. And we designed that porch to be five foot deep, so I didn't put a couple of chairs and a few of the porches. I think it'd be used to have a little more circulation, but that's, we found it to be a comfortable distance to have a couple of chairs on the front porch. Just how people often use that space. Arborist. And we, we planned some depth within all these same trees that we were brought up in a previous application. The holly, the manure, and the dog, the wall, the main, those are an additional holly that was substantially damaged that needed to be removed to, to, to end it as a same poor condition, same poor condition. Property. And, um, because of removing that, we're closing the light in the trees, so it's also a lot, we've also essentially reduced area of our proposal to address the stormwater management concerns and provide a drainage plan to deal with, um, the additional stormwater that's created. Uh, I believe there's some storm management items up for debate in this agenda. And we designed specifically to respond to that. We're actually under a threshold of threshold repair that requires to do a secondary but we're doing it anyways. And we're having to deal with the hundred test work fee of additional roof area that we're opposing. We're providing another nineteen hundred, I can see even nine point seven square feet of roof area treatment. So it should substantially reduce the amount of stormwater currently offset that may cause an issue. Overall, it's better condition. Substantial change to reduce the mass and appropriate and modest proposal for the site.
There are two visuals I'd like to point your attention to, um, that I, I hope will give some better clarity on, on the immediate impact of these variances. Um, and I'm looking now at the large plant. Um, if you go to page A two hundred, which is the front elevations.
What's the line?
A two hundred is
Oh, it's, yeah.
So this highlights the variance areas from a property layout. And you can see here from the front, the area of the lodge area that relates to two of the variance requests. And in purple, you can see the porch. Um, there is a reason why we designed, we, I didn't design, why Mr. Olson designed a porch, um, for this particular project. Could you explain why, um, from, from your design perspective, the porch is important?
It helps the mass of the building break out of that front elevation. Otherwise, it would be, it's a tall two-story box without a brick. It can be a little physically on the street. Um, this would be without the porch acceptable in the current guidelines, just goes straight up, I believe, provided image. Well, someone else has approved in that fashion, um. It's large, it looks large, and we try to utilize the most common elements to break out that mass. Uh, additionally, I wanted to, uh, part of the production of that roof model is try to get the ease of the porch and lodge and the parameters to be as close as possible to be just the deep lines of a carport. And then we'd be sloping up and so while it's true that the building height at the highest point is higher than the existing, at the ease, it's roughly the same. I think it's four or five inches taller. And it's sloping up pretty shallow from there. It's a three twelve pitch, which is the minimum that you can use asphalt shingle we can run. And it's, it's matching the roof slope of the existing house. So as it gets further away from neighboring properties and it's taller, it's received it's taller. So the, the effect is that it's not the full height right of property, it's much softer, but it doesn't feel as tall as it is or as quovient at that height at max visual height.
And I would like to remind you that Miss Olson, who sent in a letter of support, is across the street. So this is the view that she would have of the proposed variances. Um, I next would like to take your attention to, um, page A two zero three, which is the property changes. Yeah. This is the variance portion of the project, uh, that you would see from the Levine's side of the property. This is the side view of the garage. And so that is the mass area and size of, uh, the variance request as, as it presents to that side of the property. Now, if you look carefully, and it's a little bit, uh, hard to see, but you can see, uh, what a post and a sloping line there, um, in dashed lines within that yellow. That is the outline of the post and the roof line of the porch, which, as you can tell, is not at all visible from, um, from this side of the property. So it's, it's captured, it's designed to, it's captured entirely behind the garage. So this is the variance from that side of the property, uh, we looked at directly from the south. So I would like to talk a little bit about why the variance is needed. And in the letter that I gave to you on page three, figure two, you can see the block where this property is located and there's a red dot over the subject property. And you can see it's not exactly rectangular or square in shape. It's, it's irregular. And so constantly the additional houses are built. There is nowhere you can go back on the property without doing two things. First of all, you would go back into the rear setback. Another variance. And you would need to disrupt the foundation of the house, which creates design problems, creates construction problems. So we were looking to avoid having to do that. So the, the reason why the variance request is presented is because the owner is trying to increase the useful space of the house, wants to keep the existing footprint, using the current foundation and to maintain an aesthetic consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. And so you have the elevation, you have the plants, Mr. Olson is trying very hard to stay within the character of the, uh, of the neighborhood. If you go to the next, in, in the letter, which is page four, and it's also on a sheet, two ten, equals, uh, you have an example of a double existing house. It didn't require any variance. It's, it's five-five to Greystone Street. It didn't need a variance. And going to this, they and, um, they didn't have to commit to a variance. And this is, this is, this is what is being built. Now, we took a look at what this project was going like, the one in the variance, if, um, we go to the law lots. But I'm sorry, we're going to set that long. And if you take a look at A two ten, you see that in, uh, figures, in figures five, this is just what a two-deep is, what a three-deep is like. But that's not, that's not what we wanted to do on the road, what we wanted to do, but to achieve the int- additional interior space without coming in for a variance physical review though. Um, there the, the variance really is necessitated by the shape and dimension of the existing lot, which drives how those setbacks affect where the existing foundation is for this house. Um, we have talked about the change, the proper condition, um, that we would provide the additional stormwater management. Um, and we have also proper condition that we would provide the additional stormwater management. And we also have proper permission. The applicant shall install land sweeping and drainage as shown on the site plan, subject to final review and approval by the town and Montgomery County. Briefly to touch on the last statement, I, I have heard, uh, tonight, and I've heard the last hearing concerns about the survivability of the holly tree. Um, as has been mentioned, your own town arborist has reviewed the site, has been to the site, has issued a report, um, there's no guarantee of survival of trees, but nor would there be as the applicant stated in those existing setbacks. It would be unfortunately the same effect. Is this a tree that may be planted? And this is what we've probably to replant and condition the variance, should the council have their appropriate condition. Finally, um, we have gone through and evaluated the, the application and context of the variance standards of the town code. There's two. One, the practical difficulty. I explained to you, based on the shape of the lot, based on where the existing information is, the fact that, um, in order to achieve some modest additional, um, increases for footage and functionality within the house, we need these modest variances. They will have underdual practical difficulties based on, based on the, um, the size and shape of the lot. The other one is the compatibility. Town code allows various, uh, loosely framed around compatibility considerations, um. The council needs to make a finding that proposed construction would not significantly interfere with light and air between residences or other structures. And that is the standard in the code, not significantly interfere with light and air between residences or other structures, would not be incompatible with the scale, massing, and character of town or the light residences or other structures, and would not unreasonably adversely that reduce the jointed wood value of our property. Um, uh, it's, it's our position, and frankly, I think we land squarely within the legal standards of both the, um, practical difficulties variance and compatibility variance. I think it's difficult to see how there would be significant interference of light and air given these, these variances. Um, that summarizes my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions. And I hope I addressed your questions fully, um, read my comments and visuals, but I'd be happy to elaborate if you'd like.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Council President Serber, do you have any questions?
Yes, please. Uh, first, thank you for, uh, the information, just the new information. I have some questions about, I guess, the size and mass of the, uh, proposed new home. And in particular, I'm trying to understand, uh, the infill question, which I believe was, I raised, uh, the last hearing, but this package provides additional numbers. So now I go to page E one hundred. It's testified that the area highlighted in yellows to remain two thousand one hundred and eighty-seven square feet. So I interpret that to mean that there's two thousand one hundred and eighty-seven square feet in this house that is being untouched. And then if I go to the very front sheet, then the new house total size is four thousand seven hundred and eighty-one square feet. So I calculate that the change, the difference between the size of the new house and the amount of house that's not being touched is in fact the amount of construction being done. That amount of construction is more than fifty percent of the existing square footage. So I believe this is infill construction. Can you clarify or correct?
Yeah, that's not how the calculations apply in county. The calculation is applied in two batches. It's a percent of down or a percent of addition. So we're demolishing and reconstructing less than fifty percent of the existing structure. And we're constructing less than fifty percent new square footage.
How do you get to four thousand seven hundred and eighty-one square feet total? If you've destroyed one thousand two hundred and sixty-eight feet, so all you have left is two thousand one hundred and eighty-seven.
There's thirty-five eighty-five point eight square feet existing. That is being demolished and reconstructed. It's not kind of as new. It's kind of as demolished and reconstructed for the purpose of the integral calculation. The addition is thirteen hundred and thirty-eight point one square feet. That's all on calculations on pages zero one. And so that thirteen hundred and thirty-eight is less than fifty percent of thirty-five eighty-five point eight, which is existing square footage. Fifty-seven, that is seven to ninety-two would change.
Okay, um. There's an interesting treatment of the carport. To me, a carport is not a part of a dwelling. It is, it's square footed, but it's not your, it's not habitable space of a dwelling. I mean, you don't pay the same amount of insurance on the square footage in your carport. All the carport is, is a slab of pavement with an exposed roof on top. It's not an attached garage. Um, so I, I, I think that that inflates your account of the existing house.
The housing does not make that determination or determining gross square footage, which is what this calculation is based off of. When they ask us to do gross square footage, they ask us to include anything under roof. The carport is under roof. So it counts. The stoop that is in the front yard doesn't have a roof, it doesn't count. Except for the portion that is recessed in the building, which is under roof, that does count. And so that's how they, they assess standards for how we calculate gross floor area, both existing and proposed, and that's what we usually do on these calculations.
Okay. I know, I just. Yeah, I'll ask our tenant engineer to look at that more later. So that's not actually my understanding is we're just talking about the variances for remember the house as opposed to the question whether or not it's, it's infill, but I was trying to understand that.
But you can also if you, if you need to. Remember now your questions are either to the staff or the, uh,
um. So is, is Doug on the line?
Yeah, we, Doug, Doug is here.
Well, I ask another question. Can Doug? I guess, look at that question I have. By, by the way, I look at the numbers and I appreciate your sound, we have the numbers tomorrow, but I'm I, I don't know the rules that well, it's funny.
It's a very technical version of the accounting that is one of the calculations.
Yeah, it's a task carport. No problem.
If it wasn't built, we'd still need a lot of coverage, apartments as well.
Right. Well, the question is, and this gets to page A two ten, where you show the option. And it seems to me, but again, I want to fully understand this demolition versus new construction question. But it seems to me that if you were doing that, hmm, the big boxy option that would qualify as infill. It was. And if it did qualify as infill, then you would be required by our stormwater management plan to handle one percent of the runoff from all of the roof structure, because now it's all, it's, it's considered a new construction. So that would greatly complicate your design efforts on that lot, which, which makes me think that this is not really a realistic alternative.
It's a visualization. Uh, realistically, if we were going to go to manual, we're going to put a garage somewhere else on the slide, going through dispersion. We would probably be building an entire new house because at the point where we hit that amount actually existing house. of existing house, it's no longer really worth selling it. And then we're losing a majority of the character of this house and building something that's substantially larger. This one story room is split level portion on the side. We probably get rid of that and level it up so that there'd be a base of a first floor level and a second floor level, and it'd all be on the same level rather than having to spread this stuff up. And it's part of the complication why we're locating the project where we are. If you push it back, we lose that first floor square footage and still have split level condition. And it makes it very hard to program in that smaller space.
You know, we're gonna go around.
In, there was like in the context.
Hold that thought right there. I have not had any further questions this time.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Barr.
I'm going to press you on a minimally necessary standard here. And the sorry, I'm going to press you on the minimally necessary standard in our variances. In theory, you could have built a house entirely within the footprint of the existing house. And if you had done that, you would not have needed variances, even though the house does not conform to our setbacks as it currently stands. And that's really what 5522 Creston did. But you found that to be not sufficient for your needs. And so you are expanding the footprint minimally, and it is a minimal increase. Why was it insufficient for your needs?
Because it would likely result in complete demolition of the existing house to be more impactful than the variances that we are requesting, which saves a substantial portion of the existing house. The general layout and function that is there, it will remain. And then increases the mass substantially, the only portions that we need to have setbacks. So to so our variance and we can program the proposed it's a tear down the rebuild. And that is not really impactful.
Yeah, right, right. And I get that point, that it is far more resource intensive to be built. And so in essence, you're saying that it is too strict an interpretation of the necessary standard to hold you to saying that you should stay within the footprint because that would have required a lot more activity and work than what you are doing, just saving all that. That I get.
Is that, is that a progress? Thank you, Councilor Heller.
Did I understand it correctly that you actually could have taken the garage and pushed it back? So you didn't need a variance, but you were going to lose space in the house. I didn't ask you. Thank you. But thank you.
Existing finished space in the house on the first floor, which because it's a split level, is already a reduced floor. Additionally, it's going to require significant structural changes to what we're closing down what we're doing to the point that it's not really worth saving the rest of the existing house once you get to that point. And we're trying to do this saving essential character of the existing house. It's already parking space. Actually reduce it from versus trying to take that and rebuild it at somewhere else.
It sounds like a lot of the issue here is the garage. And, you know, sure, you've you've totally laid out a pretty house. I'm sure you could do something beautiful as well, but stay within the confines of the code. So.
I'd like to elaborate a little bit on that as well. If you go to figure two on page three, which shows the lot. See? And really practically speaking, correctly, the hall, that back corner to the right of the cage is as far back as you can go. I'm looking right here. It's as far back as you can go because you're already at the setback. So if you push the garage into the house, you basically lose this functionality on the side because there's just not much space left to work with given the split level layout. And if you push, push back, if you, so if you're going to go across the property and meet the setback, I'm marking this up here, you might be able to see the blue line. There's, you can't do much with that little slit or even if you go back within the setback. It really is a function of a location of the existing construction and this non-parallel lot shape that we're dealing with. And so it doesn't give you a lot to work with confines of the of the house, even more if you want to keep a function of the watch.
When you bought the house, did you give any thought to that?
I
I'm sorry, I couldn't remember his name.
We had talked, we had talked to the, I talked to the owners here too, we talked to the we understood all that. So the, and as I said at the last hearing, that this was, you know, the best, the best approach, you know, for what we had, what we had to work with as well as, you know, what we thought would meet the status for the neighborhood.
Okay. Just wondering what you thought about it. I know, and you said that the last time too, we appreciate that. But you have to, you have to.
Okay, then, Councilor Riber.
Um, so my question wise, if you, so my, my understanding is that this house is already, the foundation already kind of encroaches into the setbacks that are now set up in our world. So if you were to tear this house down, do you get grandfathered into those?
No.
So you have to start then back kind of at square one with, you know, the appropriate setbacks for the foundation. And if you were to do that and like go back into this lot and like kind of start from scratch, like, would you be able, you know, to build a house that would be within those setbacks and like on this lot? Or is a lot size just too weird that it kind of had to be like that from the beginning?
You know, according to sort of our preliminary concept statute, you would build a sensible house within the existing allowable setbacks.
But you guys want to keep the foundation. And so like you were saying, the garage is really the one that's like more in question.
Well, that right side, I think this square side, when it's the primary, sleeping, two levels of house is still almost untouched. We're making some slight modifications to the interior of those rooms and changing some windows. But the roof stays, the wall stays. It's what it is, we're keeping that. This floor where it is, it's just that we're as a function of construction feasibility, ten down to the first floor, rebuild the walls where they are. And just adding a second story on top of that. That's not put into our variance, but it is the concept that we're trying to maintain the existing character and build something that's appropriate. And to tear that down and start new, while possible, is a much more significant and impactful. I'm sure we could find a great design for a beautiful house that will never be anything like what's there.
Right.
And we're trying to retain that character.
And is this, is the part, like if you're looking at the house, is the part on the right, is that like a high ceiling structure or something that you don't? I mean, why do you not touch that side?
It's a split level. So it has
Okay.
It's almost there as shown on that first floor. And we're not touching it because it's not necessary to build any apartments. And it's an important character to find the future of the house that we want to keep.
Yeah.
And if I could want you to achieve D 100, this is the existing structure. That portion of the house is, is going to stay as is.
And then in that same diagram then, so that's, that's remaining. But then that carport off to the side.
It converted into a garage essentially. Changing the roof line on it. It's the same piece. It's a one story parking structure.
Oh, so it's more of like, so right now it's a carport that's not considered in the square footage of the house?
It is considered in square footage.
Okay. Um, you know, it's interesting because like we've seen a lot of construction going on around this neighborhood and there's a lot of different houses that have just been built with one car garages that have sold for a lot of money. Would you guys ever consider making a smaller garage there?
It's a question of right now, it's currently providing two covered parking spaces. We're reducing it to one. So you're spending going to essentially reduce value.
It's, I, I've really like seen, I mean, these houses are right across the street from here. They have one car garages. The house that is right on 40, what is next to me, 4519 Cumberland? They have a one car garage on the side of their house, and then they built another car garage in the back because they said they couldn't have two cars for resale. But that, that now structure is used as an office. Like, do you anticipate like being able to convert this to more like living space? Or is this solely for a two car garage? I would, I would look at like these houses because, you know, all Cumberland on the other side has zero car garages. And, you know, as far as their resale value, they still sell for a lot of money. So, you know, I'm just, because I, I know it's like all in question and stuff like that, but I just mentioned that.
Is that, is that your last question?
Yeah, that's it.
Again, I'm going to go a second round. Council President Serber, do you have any further questions?
No further questions.
Thank you, Councilor Barr.
No further questions.
Councilor Heller.
No questions.
Okay, now is the opportunity for comments or questions. Residents.
Thank you, I'm going to start. You sent a memo in and I don't want to repeat everything, but on the law, there wasn't much discretion about the law. We have the lovely lawyers and we looked at the law. We learned over the course of these report. And we actually learned that what we said in the first instance is even more true. Variance, variances are to be very rarely granted. We found a case that said almost never is a denial of a variance overturned on appeal. And almost never maintained. I mean, they really are very narrowly construed. I think that this council because Mr. Bolt has been telling you that our variance legislative law is more lenient than elsewhere because it's disjunctive. But our law, I think, Mr. Bolt, I think you'll confirm that what we learned in researching this law of section D, the Maryland G A D that. So we really can't read our law disjunctively because you must have an A, which is the one that says it has to be exceptional, extraordinary, peculiar. A lot, a lot has to be exceptional, extraordinary, peculiar. The cases say unique, I mean, it has to be really extraordinary. Okay, and, and you have to have that. So there's no, no circumstance in which you could grant a variance on subsection B alone. You have to have A. So since you have to have A, B really has no meaning other than to read it conjunctively. Now, this is to say, I think the importance here is we don't think they need any of the standards of A or but the point is that it's a fair so narrowly construed. We don't just grant to these really compelling reasons. And this we submit respectfully is not even okay? The so we wrote, you know, the joke about rare and sparingly and only under exceptional circumstances. Okay, we read that. This time around, we thought, let's look at that. They're saying this lot is unusually shallow. She, Ms. Rosenfeld says it's unusually shallow. So we, we went online to the, to the Maryland. This is the official, this is from the, you know, maryland.gov little properties. It's a bigger, bigger picture with different lot sizes. And we measured with our little, with our little ruler and a barrier right here. We measured the, the edge of 4806 that they're saying is exceptionally exceptionally shallow, they say, exceptional. We measured it and
Do you, do you want to share that and submit that for?
Well, I don't have copies of it. Honestly, I marked it up and I marked all the ones, some of the ones, I would say, include that have. So, so let me just say what my procedure was. I, I measured that edge of 4806 and it's, you know, whatever, 20, more than that. I don't know exactly how many, but I had no views in the middle years, of course. And I, that we then have been around looking for other lots that have a similarly shallow side. There are at least 28, this amounts to 28, that have a similarly shallow side. I believe it was yours.
I was just looking there.
I believe it was yours. And I think it might have been Mr. as well. And now, of course, they're all a little bit different from one or another, but this shallings is not exceptional. That on the law just doesn't pass that very first of the many things that it must pass. And I listed them. It has to be, and so the very, and the cases are clear. The analysis has nothing to do with practical difficulty, has nothing to do with minimal reasons are necessary. It has to be an exceptional, extraordinary, peculiar lot. This is not. So that's really the end of the analysis. Dun, dun, dun. That's the way it should be. But you can go on and look at the other standards, okay? Even if it's an exceptional lot, it has to, this, this, the sentence in our quote has the word peculiar twice. It says, even if it's extraordinary lot, it has to, that feature of the lot must result in peculiar or unusual practical difficulties. It's not any old practical difficulties. It's got to be something peculiar or unusual. And when you look at the case law, it's very, very clear that peculiar and unusual does not include things like very clear, for example, does not include, where do I have this? Does not include language, I'm going to find it in my document. It does not include that it was, that it's suitable. So a garage is suitable, does not include that something is desirable. It is not, it's something that could do no harm, you know, that may be just processing streets. I guess something doing harm, that's not, that's not the standard. So if you have a peculiar and unusual practical difficulty, convenience or profitability, none of those can constitute a practical difficulty, right? I mean, I can read the language from the American appellate court. The fact that a variance might allow an improvement to the property that is suitable or could do no harm or would be convenient, applicable to its owner, does not provide a basis for granting that is the case called Cromwell. And then, of course, the last, even, even if it was exceptional and even if it were, it results in practical, unusual, practical difficulties. Even then, it can't be granted if it's, unless it's the minimum reason of the necessary. And the case law, again, it is clear in, I mean, in Rockvine and Cromwell. But in Rockvine is a case, I know that Mr. Bolt is familiar with it, because when I first met because we're more lenient. But it turns out that the provision in Rockvine, in Montgomery County, variance provision is virtually identical to because we're more agents, but it turns out that the provision in Rockvine, in Montgomery County, various provision is virtually identical to our Cromwell A. And that is a case where a woman wanted to build a two-car garage. And it went up and it got, you know, but in the end, it was hell up hell and she could not get a variance for that. And she don't have the reason why she wanted it. It was not, it was not exceptional and did not present a practical difficulty and was not the minimum reasonably necessary. And there's a bunch of cases like that. So, I mean, the pitch I'm making here is, you know, this doesn't hold up. Even then, because it's not disjunctive, you have to go to Prom B. And I'd like to talk a little bit about Prom B. I've got myself so worked up here that I didn't really follow my outline so well. So I'm gonna quickly just make sure I've touched everything here. I believe I have. Prom B. It is the first part of Prom B is light and air. Okay, I guess we've already talked about. I'm sorry, I have a problem. I have to go back to practical difficulty for one more, couple more points. The case law is clear. Well, Ms. Roosevelt, in the first application, Rothvo said that they required it, their practical difficulty, and I asked, they said, the practical difficulty is we cannot meet our client's requirements without doing this. And I said, what are the client's requirements? And they said, our client's requirements are two-part, an enclosed two-car garage and porch. That's our client's requirements. That was their practical difficulty. Unless we do this, if this variance, we can't do that. Difficulty has to do with square footage. And I'd like to point out that enclosing this carport doesn't actually give them any more square footage than they get unenclosed. They don't get one more inch of square footage. They said, we need to enclose this garage to get more square footage. We need, we need to get this setback so we get more square footage. They don't get one inch of square footage from imposing this garage. That's just, that's not right. And they say, changing the existing footprint, but they are. There's a little open table behind the carpet that they're filling in. I mean, it's very nice to have, as you look at it, it's dirt. That's not a foundation, that's dirt. They're, they're extending there and they, and they can extend there, they can keep the, there's a lot in any sense. But this really is about, is they wanted a two-car garage. It's about, it's about what they said in the first instance. They just wanted to, an enclosed two-car garage. And as, as, as one of you guys said, excuse me, for the familiarity, we walked up and down Granton the other day, which we've done, of course, a million times, but I think there are only two, I think there are four houses on the lot that have no garage. There are four houses on the block that have a one-car carport. And then there's maybe two or three houses on the, on the, on the block that have a one-car garage. And then only two houses on the block that have two, two-car garages. So, I mean, it's just not, it's just not something that they need to have, doesn't meet the practical difficulty standard. It doesn't meet the reasonable, reasonably necessary standard. As I say, they don't meet the first standard. It's not an exceptional lot. Not an extraordinary or peculiar lot. There's many lots that are very similar.
Okay, Ms. Levine, do you have anything?
Oh goodness, I do have some more.
Try to be great.
So they do have room to expand in the rear. You know, Ms. Roosevelt said something about, suddenly, there's this expression that they can't expand to the rear because something about disrupting the foundation, that's brand new. She never said it, no one ever said that before. And there's kind of, the previous owner was planning to expand into the rear. There's no reason why they can't expand into the rear. If they want to expand in the center and rear, they, and they need a little more space. That would be objectionable to us, probably. I mean, you've been asking to talk, so I got it, but there's no reason why they can't expand to the rear. If they want to expand, they're already extending that big rectangle, that big rectangle behind the carport. And they're extending in the, they're wanting to extend the porch. If they really wanted additional interior space, why don't they make a porch? Why don't they ask for a porch? If they really for a store, then you think they would they have that extra square footage there. That's not what it's about. They just want to have the imposed two-car garage in permissible location. They can move it back. They say, if they move it back, there's not enough space behind it. There's plenty of space behind it for a portion of a pantry or something like that. Bottom line is there are plenty of things that they can do. And very significantly, Mr. Lobbie said he knew about this when he bought it. So the law is clear. It says, so in the code, that you can't make up your practical difficulties. You can't buy a lot knowing what the only what the syntax are, you know, what variance rules are, and then say, I've got a practical difficulty. I can't, I can't build what I that I wouldn't be able to. You're not allowed to do that.
Okay, do you have anything else? Because this is your
Oh, I have something really important to say. So I did want to talk about, on Prom B, on Prom B. On Prom B, very important, the light and air. I talked about how this carport is going to be forty percent higher. They sent a picture taken on a very dark day, dark shadows. Trying to say that the lattice is already there. You can't see anything. First of all, that lattice is now, just put up without a permit, without a variance, due to setback. Mr. Bolt, who was the one who put it up, that was a terrible thing. So
I understand his voice.
Oh, it's very much on point. There's light in the air. There's lots of light in the air coming through that carport and that lattice coming down as it you sent a picture today, it said, Mr. Pop, we're getting to the lattice there. Plenty of light in the air. It's all going to be destroyed for us. You want to say by the people across the street or someone else in town, I think it's not a big deal, but the code says you gotta look at the adjoining neighbors' perspective.
Okay, do you have anything? Do you have anything? I think it
It's very, really important for me to get to the tree on this one one. Okay, so the, on the tree, I just want to mention a point I tried to make on the real quick. They say Dr. Pedder said it won't be, it won't be harmed even though it's angel digging, because they're putting in a foundation and they're putting in, what do you call those things? Splitters, splutters and crawl space, everything major digging in the drip line of that tree, maybe that tree will survive. This tree is very important. As you can see from that last page of these drawings, there's going to be a big house there. We want that tree to live. We believe that even if it does live, will be locked off because the house is literally in the way of the house. You can see that if you look at the picture. The drip line is, and the drip line is where they're going to be building.
Okay, I think you made that clear. So gone to the last point.
This is critical, really, really critical. They, they said that they put submitted a change plan, okay? And they said they don't have a hundred and fifty square feet, but they do. I don't, I don't understand the math. We, we took the, we took the, the new, that new area behind the carport. Took the two rectangles. There's two different rectangles. One, we did one, we had two, the other, and we ended the porch. We did length times width, length times width, length. We haven't been all up and twirling for a hundred and fifty, so I don't know what they mean if they're not yet for one fifty. And they've agreed to do a bridge plan. The town has asked them to do a bridge plan, but they because there is a town tree, this one. Huge, beautiful town tree that they do not have in their plan. And the roots of this town tree, this town tree is right on the corner between two properties, and it has major, major roots right where they're planned to put this huge dry well. And they don't have the tree in their plan. So nobody came to look at the property apparently. There is no way that they can put that dry well there. And moreover, with just the dry well set, there's no place on our side of the property where they're going to be able to put an adequate size dry well. Okay, so Mr. Mayor, I know you want me to go here, but people have a lot to say, so you can fuck me up.
Well, you have a limited amount of time. And so you've made, I think you've made all those points. Do you have anything new that you want to add? Because we have because we, because this is your last chance to comment on this variance application. Because, because the, because the applicant has the opportunity to rebut, and then that's the end of the hearing. So I think, I think that, I think that you've made most of your points. Is there anything new you want to add?
Well, this point about the tree on the boundaries
Okay, they, they, it's noted.
And I don't, my husband has something. It's only fair to let him say something, but I wanted to, yes, I'll work in the bottom rest. This book, Bookie Monster, they have about this, what they're going to do as a variety if they don't get this variance. First of all, that's not a part of this analysis. It's not permissible to think about, to consider that. Yes, they're going to grant this variance because otherwise they're going to do something worse. That's not one of the criteria, right? You gotta follow the code's criteria. We don't think, well, it's a little mysterious to me that this, this drawing, that they say what they're going to do if they don't have the variance. It actually includes, seems to include the carport, which, if they're keeping the carport, then why would they need to? I don't get it. They're keeping the carport, which is what that picture has. They're just keeping the carport, but they never, plus somehow if they didn't get the variance, they have to fill up three stories. That doesn't make any sense at all. They're keeping the carport. They have, they've always had. So, doesn't make sense. You understand? You're fucking up. They still could build the same lot.
Your average needs of practice, so you're not getting
Okay, okay. And then I just wanted to add that we don't believe, as you well know, we don't believe they have as a right and they have to follow our code, and our code has even have the building provision.
Okay, you've already, you've already made that clear.
Okay.
Is there anything new?
The thing is, the thing is, you know, they use this precedent. They say that the fifty-five twenty-two is precedent.
Okay, you
I didn't say anything about that yet, Mr. Mayor. I know you're in that net, please. They say fifty-five twenty-two is precedent, as though it is somehow binding precedent. Not at all. This council can say, you know, to, we don't need to give them the ability to build this because we have fifty-five twenty-two. This town council can say, based on, we have, based on fancy and bulk and density, to do something that's going to be a monstrosity. So this business of ads are right, no agree on that. The store owner, as I've mentioned, there's another aspect of this, this Rosenfeld's letter that is incorrect. She says at the end, she says at the end that on page eight, she says, both types of variance that's a variance, because a lot of councils consider additional factors. And she says, these factors apply to both practical difficulties and compatibility. And the first one is the size and location of the proposed construction, topography, and existing or planned vegetation. That one only applies to B, not to A. It's irrelevant to A. I can read the code text into you if you want.
You don't, you don't need to.
Okay, so that's, that's incorrect, and I want to correct the inaccuracy in the report. And I do think, again, I don't understand, they keep saying that they're not changing the footprint. And they're substantially changing the footprint, both in the porch and in the rectangle behind the carport. Submitted photos that elucidate a lot of the beauty of the tree, the incredible importance of that tree to us, and
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Okay, Ms. Levine, what did you want to add?
Mr. Mayor, please, you did say that this is our last chance, so please make it a please make it a I'd like to invite the counsel's attention to the part of the application that doesn't have a page number, but it seems to be the drainage to the front of that We asked him, what, what the town had asked asking to do that was in addition to what we'd done in his initial set of plans. And he said they wanted a tree that was complete. So in three, excuse me, in this drainage plan, you will note where the dry well number one is located, there is no circle there showing the drainage plan. Right on this property line, there is a huge town tree, a huge town tree. The code requires, and the council specifically requesting, that trees on the property, and the code talks about adjoining properties where the drip line goes onto the subject property, be identified. That tree that is not identified, the drip line goes over the entirety of dry well number one, the entirety of those. And the photograph, which is
I, I think your wife already made that point.
I'm sorry?
Did your wife already make that point?
Yeah, this is a critical point because
Okay, but she already made the point, so you made the point, so can you come up to your next point?
So, so your words, this has to drive it in deep. It will absolutely, without doubt, kill that tree.
Okay, so you made your point.
Then you made the point. You can make yours before, whatever you want.
I'm not, I'm, I'm trying to conduct the here. We're trying to get all of your points in order. You don't need to, to go on over and over again.
I'm not going over and over it. Now, the town, the town arborist did a, a plan, and he was given the site plan, and the site plan that was given to him did not include that town tree.
Okay, so you made your point.
Okay, I want to just point out
No, 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 it's
This is the picture of the roots of the tree.
You've had the chance to testify. Now your husband is testifying.
So I understand
Okay, okay, okay.
Everyone's getting tired and trying to
No, 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 we have to, you've already made your point. You've made your points. Okay, Ms. Levine. Ms. Levine, would you please proceed?
You've made it very difficult for us. It's difficult to do this in a coherent way when
You've made your, can you please?
By that, by that comment.
Okay, so this is not a debate. This is your opportunity to comment on the application. Anything additional that you've already submitted?
But we live right next to the
That is the point.
And what is important
Mr. Levine.
On this point, on this point, where we live is different from where everybody else in the town lives.
Okay, that's not
Special interest in adjoining and
Okay, okay, you're out of order. This is not in order. So do you have any additional comments you'd like to make? I think, I think you've made it quite clear. I think you've submitted adequate comments on everything. Is there anyone else that wishes to comment on this application before we get the rebuttal testimony from the applicant?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor? Sorry, this is Kevin Lavine at forty-eight oh nine. I, I didn't know where other neighbors are going to be given a chance to just
Yes, you have your chance to speak.
Terrific, thanks.
I'm sorry, Kevin, I, I just muted you on accident.
Am I unmuted?
Yeah, there you go. Sorry.
Okay. So sorry, Matt, I, I had, and I sent you a text separately, a message separately. It's just that you didn't know that I had submitted an email, I think, you know, when I got notice of this. And so just to let, let folks know, I mean, we're across the street at forty-eight oh nine and grant them. And, and, you know, I'm not going to get to go through it all, but the summary of our views was that I thought the variances, in fact, did seem quite minor. And that the overall, the proposed renovation, I thought would actually enhance the aesthetic of our street. And, and I actually appreciated the work that the architects did to respond to the comments of the council that were raised at the last meeting. So I just wanted to make sure that the council had the benefit of that. Again, I did submit these, these comments via email, but they didn't make it into the record, so I just wanted to make
Those, the comments you made were for the last hearing. So I, according to the
No, 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 I sent a separate email. In fact, it starts with, we received notice yesterday that there will be another hearing on the variance was requested, etc. So I, it was specifically after notice of this meeting.
Okay, I'll, I'll make sure that
In any case, you, you have the benefit, right? We live across the street. We think it looks quite nice, and we think it will enhance the, the overall character of the street, so we're supportive.
Okay, thank you.
My comment about that is
No, you're out of order. You're out of
I think
Say your name here, Mr. Street.
Oh, I'm, I'm in, I live at forty-nine hundred Boston Avenue. I happen to have represented not these buyers, but the buyers before, who then had to sell it because this town council actually approved their variance, but then the leans just continued to believe them. And I just feel like
Objection.
You did?
That is out of order.
Oh, sorry.
May I please stick to the point?
Okay. I just think that we as are such a nice place to live. We are neighborly. We understand that people want, you have a two-car garage, somebody else has a two-car garage. are such a nice place to live. We are neighborly. We understand that people want, you have a two-car garage, somebody else has a two-car garage, nobody has a lovely two.
Okay, okay.
We want two-car garages. And I just think like if our neighbors want to enclose a carport, that's a two-car that a sunroom behind it, and they wanna put garage doors on it, I just don't see why we as a town would be put in a position where to say no. Now, again, I think these are lovely developers. Maybe the next time if they're forced to sell it, we get somebody who puts up a giant thing like Grisbon. Well, I know that's. I just feel like I wanna say that this, they, they and this design that's been presented, which I just saw, seems totally cool for our neighborhood. I walk that street every day with my dog and I just don't understand why we want a monstrosity up there. So.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's, I think, we get what you're saying.
That's it.
Okay, and now, Ms. Res, it's your chance for the rebuttal.
Yes, thank you. Um, I'd, I'd like to make just a, a couple of brief points. But first, I think I'm gonna, um, ask Mr. Albee, did you, was there anything I wanted to say?
Sure, is that it's been very clear since the start, just the first day I met, that they don't object to the garage. They object to the second story. And they made that very clear. They made it clear at the hearing the last time. They made it clear in emails. They made it very clear. They would be fine with the garage as long as I wasn't building on top of the house. And so when we look at this, every neighbor has said, I'm with the garage, right? They're fine with the garage, but they, what they're trying to do is to say, we're not fine with the garage to try and prevent uh, uh, any type of renovation or any work on certain, but that would interfere with the windows. They made it very clear, we started building the. Well, I, I don't think this one I say is really not about a, a neighbor objecting to that. Is that what they're looking to do is once we get to that is the, the actual structure itself.
Thank you. And, and I just took a little on that a, a little bit. Um, I believe it was Mrs. Levine said, why don't you put the variance in the middle of the lot without the house? Well, the why? If all of those really strict standards that she has been reciting apply to the property, they apply to the variance standards, whether it's on one side of the house, the other side of the house, or in the back. So, um, you know, it, it's not a question of negotiating where the variance goes. Um, either the property qualifies or doesn't. It's very clear now if you use a property who does qualify for a variance. Um, regardless of how many other lots in the neighborhood, like in the blue, um, they can look at this layout again, the, the general lot shape is included to this property as a much more backyard, I mean, of the property in this block. It's also further constrained by the, um, by the established building line, the EBL in front. The notion that you, uh, you can't qualify for a variance because of the self-enforced hardship. Self-enforced hardship doesn't imply a property that's constrained. If that were the case, there's not a person alive, subject to his own code, who could buy a piece of property and come in for a variance. The, the standard for self-enforced hardship really is, did you build a garage and then come ask us for a variance? You can't, can't violate code and come in and say, I have a hardship here because I did something where I'm, I'm sorry, let's fix it. This is not self-enforced hardship. This is the result of established building line, the layout and size and depth and shape of the lot and our, um, setback standards, which were imposed after this council's. Nothing about is this self-enforced. I also, um, we do have to play it out. And, and I'm not going to go through it. We do satisfy practical circumstances. We also.
Remember, you're supposed to only address objections that were made by comments from residents, not to re, uh, argue your case.
I, I, I'm sorry. I, I thought, I thought I was, I thought I was addressing.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I, it wasn't clear to me, but please make sure you address the objections.
That, that is what I'm, I'm working for my notes that I made.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
Sure, I appreciate that. Um, the, um, so, so we do need the practical difficulties variance for the reasons that I just explained. We also do need the compatibility, uh, that, um, I, your proposed construction would not significantly interfere with light and air, would not be compatible with the scale, mass, and character of the town or from your white residence. It is disjunctive. These two A and B are not paired. There's or, it says you qualify for practical difficulties or you can qualify for compatibility. We say we want both, but it clearly is a disjunctive standard. The question of the foundation, um, having to demolish the foundation did come up at the last hearing. There was discussion about it with more than the council members and I watched that entire hearing. So that's not a, a new argument tonight. That was information that we brought forward last time. With respect to the, uh, dry well, it goes without saying that any dry well location, final standards, final construction, final location, it's going to have to be approved through the building process. We brought it forward as a solution. We stand by our property to make things better, not worse. And so, um, you know, this was a concept plan and we, we made that property with respect to the tree and the dry wells and understand by that, it will get approved through the building process. And I guess my final comment is you, you have heard extensive opposition from, um, Mr. Mrs. Levine. I, I would like to submit that the two people who live across the street who see this have told you that they consider this a modest variance request. They support the design, support the application. Couple of other, three other letters in support as well, that the two most effective property owners have said, this is okay. This is good for our community.
Okay, sure, that's rebuttal then.
Okay.
Because I don't think.
They, they didn't want, you're correct. So I'll.
So if there's anything else that you want. Well, it's not a closing argument. It's only rebuttal testimony.
That's, that's, uh, uh, we, it, based on all the facts and evidence and record, we need the standard of the law.
Okay, okay, thanks. Okay, thank you very much. This concludes the public portion of the hearing. The record is now closed. The council may now discuss and deliberate on the findings of fact and conclusions of law and may vote on the application. Now we'll turn it over to the council president to lead the discussion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all, participants, for, you know, your comments and insights and, and sharing your concerns. My, so, for, for the council, I'll, I'll share some of my thoughts just to get the discussion going. This is a, a new application. I'm, I consider this to be an application focused on variance. This is not a full building permit, so we're not really sort of looking at whether or not the dry wells are acceptable, but I do find that a little concerning. Or looking at the variances. That said, as your attorney has indicated, we can recognize that there was a similar or prior application by the, um, by the, the, the folks here, uh, back in September, I believe. I, I think that this is a very minor modification. And one thought I had is, we heard people talking about the appearance from the front of the house and other residents. The variances that are requested are all with regards to the front setback. So that means as you look at it, whether there's a variance or not, you're not really gonna see, unless you get up close and take three D pictures or whatever, because it's just turned towards you. But the neighbors on the sides will see that further projection into the front setback. I, I have heard, really, nothing explains why things are. I think you can come up with some nice designs that would not require uh, variance in front setback or at least not as much of a variance request. There's no change in the con setback. The last one, maybe it's, um, personally, this is just me personally. And not by, I know it's meant to be useful to show options. I find this somewhat offensive. We are, I, I believe we were given with not a patient for a specific house. And we should not have the but threats, I'm finding very objectionable to me overheads because we try to assess what's being presented. And there are so many things that if that's not, that's really valid application. I could be wrong, but I'm convinced that that would require full stormwater management, one hundred percent intention stormwater, which is not trivial on the lot. So I'm not sure that's a realistic proposal. So, my intonation is to, you know, those are my thoughts. Robin?
Yeah, um, I, I have to say that I am on the other side here, Steve, and I'll try and walk it through. Um, that's why I asked the question I did at the beginning, which was that, why didn't they, um, build a new house that would be entirely within the, um, setbacks? Or why didn't they build a renovation that was only going without any variance added? And the reply to both is that they are trying to build a home that is compatible with the neighborhood. Um, that retains a lot of the existing fifty-style ranch that's there. Um, and does not present, uh, a, a mass such as has been referenced multiple times, the one fifty-five twenty-two rental. So, I see they have succeeded in that. As the other several neighbors have commented on the, um, they see it as a positive addition to, to their neighborhood. Um, I, I would prefer rain gardens to dry wells, I have to say, because that would be an even more positive additions to the neighborhood, but either will work in terms of managing stormwater. That is true. And this is not a, uh, hearing on your, um, drainage plan either that comes with the permit. So that, that is clear. Um, I don't think you're extending the garage, or are you? I mean, the carport, yeah, right. So there is, there is no extension of, of, of roof area with garage. Um, so that, that, that isn't, there, there's changes that we've seen between the last application and this one. Take the total expansion down from a hundred fifty square feet to a hundred square foot. That's a reduction of a third in terms of growth, which is a noticeable difference. Um, Dr. Feather has clarified in his expert arborist's opinion, which he is the only expert arborist around, that all the tree is likely to survive the buildings of this house, and that is different too. So we have a home that is going to be compatible with the neighborhood, uh, as expressed by the neighbors. Um, that minimally extends its size, um, that does not present, um, an increase in mass that is alarming to the neighbors at all. That's why I support these variances.
Thank you, Robin. What thought?
Um, I, I need to go back to, um, what I've said all along, and I, I think I say it a lot during our meetings, is that we need to build houses that meet our code. And I think in this situation, you have a very talented architect, clearly, who could have done that. He can do that. Um, I think you just don't want, when I get that, and I feel badly because I want everybody to be happy, without a doubt. And, um, I, I just, um, I, I think they, this, you, you did make, uh, they did make modifications. I think they were, as you said, seemed very minor. Um, and I, um, I was also offended by the, um, by the pictures of, look what we could build, you know, look, look what we can do if you don't let us do this. I feel like we've had that gun in our back before and, um, I don't think we can tolerate that, quite frankly. Um, I, I know I cannot, I cannot support these and I'm sorry, truly, I'm sorry, because this is it. I'd like everyone to be happy. But I think you should go back and design something that, that, that fits, fits the code.
Is that me? Shant?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, my position on this has kind of been the same all along. I just don't really see the, um, I, I don't see like the challenge or necessity, um, to go have this many feet of variance from the existing setback laws that this house is already over. So.
So it sounds like someone's ready to make a motion. And, and the tenor can help.
And I might need to, let me just see if I can. There we go. Just wanted to get to the.
To me, Cindy, Jen, I'm.
Just, that's what I'm trying to do. And I got to it. There we go. Sorry, thank you for bearing with me there. Um, I recommend that, um, the council deny the request for four variance applications submitted by James Alpie, representing Rockland Capital LLC for a property located forty-six grand.
Is that legally and technically sufficient, as you kind of determined?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would, I would substitute move for recommend.
Okay, is there a second to the motion? Is there discussion?
Yeah, I would like the, to lay out your reasons for denying the request.
Doesn't meet our code.
Is that, is that required?
By definition.
Is that required?
Doesn't meet our code, dude.
Hold on, hold on one second. Mr. Attorney, is that required?
I would write the decision based on the deliberations and the council would review the decision before it's issued. It, it can be helpful to lay out the criteria in the motion, but I do have enough based on the discussion.
I, I would like it to be very.
Okay, but, but that's up to the maker of the motion, if he wants to do that.
Is this part of the motion, just?
No, he's, we're having a discussion. So he's, he's.
Oh, they started the discussion before they voted on.
But you were not, they were not required because the town attorney responded that he would be writing a decision that will answer those questions that you will all review for its issue to make sure it's accurate.
Um, sure, so. I do not feel, and I'll, once, because I think we're all coming at this with slightly different perspectives, but I do not feel that the variances requested are the minimum necessary on that lot. I think that, I think that the modifications that we've seen are essentially just adjusting the roof lines, just how the square footage of roof has been reduced, which is a, a positive addition in terms of stormwater management, but the house structure, none of the walls have changed from before to today. And, um, and I personally am not convinced that, hey, this house on this lot has to have a two-car garage that sticks out. However many feet it sticks into the town setback requires such an extensive variance. I would have that, I almost said what I would like, that, it just, I, I want, when we emphasize, I saw that there is no change to the front setback of the garage. I found that disappointing.
Okay, is there further discussion on the motion?
Yeah.
I would like to add.
Is there further discussion?
This is, this is.
This is, I'm discussing.
Okay.
I'd like to say that, um, I know we, we, we've got some supporting, um, letters from a couple of neighbors. But what I want the record to show is that we have, what, what really, not, we've never been discussing is that we do have one very unhappy neighbor. And that is the next door neighbor. Probably the most important neighbor in this is, the neighbors are the ones on the left and to the right. And we have a very unhappy neighbor. Now, that doesn't mean we shouldn't grant a variance, but we have an unhappy neighbor. But I think what we've heard is very compelling why we should, from our neighbor, why we should not, um, grant this. So I want to make sure that's just part of this.
Okay, thank you. Is there further discussion on the motion?
I would like to say that, first of all, that the idea that they should comply with the code misunderstands what variances are. Um, variance is a. Variants, of course, are variations from our code, and that's what we're considering. I'd like also to say that any neighbor is equally important wherever they are. And that, that is true in this case, as in any case. But I really think the big difficulty with us is that. We have a problem when. An existing house is not conforming to our setbacks. And the renovation goes on. Because if there's the slightest change to the footprint out of those circumstances, the variance has come into us as seven-foot changes and eight-foot changes. When in fact, they are actually minimal changes to the actual footprint of the house, because the house doesn't conform to the setback. That's what's going on here.
Okay, is there further discussion on the motion?
That's, I'm just laying that out, and that's it.
Okay, thank you, hearing all those in favor.
So.
All those opposed. Okay, thank you. This concludes the public hearing, thank you to all the parties, the town attorney will now issue a written decision based on the council motion, and the decision will be given to all interested parties by the town manager. The next item on the agenda is the building administrator's report, Mr. Bumire.
Just a couple of things to go over tonight, at 4501 Cumberland Avenue, and also at 4503 Cumberland Avenue. The construction's been completed, the new residents have moved in, and then town is in the process of closing those two building permits. At 5502 Greystone, the town issued a building permit on July 1st, and the work is begun on that project. 5510 Greystone, work has also begun on that project. And at 5613 Warwick. Town issued a building permit on October 13th, and they're working on that project right now, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, council president, sir, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Council member Barr.
No questions.
Counselor Heller.
No questions.
Counselor Robert.
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Next item, public hearing motion to consider adoption of the following five amendments as recommended by the Somerset Board of Supervisors of Elections. Number one, an amendment to section 8321 of the charter to add a definition of recited as recommended by the Somerset Board of Supervisors of Elections. Number two, an amendment to section 8326 of the charter to provide that if a resident is registered to vote with the Montgomery County Board of Elections. They shall be deemed registered for elections in the town so long as the resident remains qualified to vote. To provide that voters may be removed from the list if not qualified to vote, and to provide that the removal of voters from the registration list. Shall comply with the application, the applicable procedures set forth in state law as recommended by the Somerset Board of Supervisors of Elections. Number three, an amendment to section 8328 of the charter to advance the nomination meeting from four weeks to eight weeks prior to the election. And the nomination petition deadline from 21 days before the election to 10 days after the nomination meeting. To allow more time to prepare ballots and administer the election as recommended by the Somerset Board of Supervisors of Elections. Number four, an amendment to section 8335 of the charter to allow uncontested elections to be canceled as recommended by the Somerset Board of Supervisors of Elections. And number five, an amendment to section 8330 of the charter to allow elections by mail and other means, and to remove the requirement for incapacitation or absence for absentee voting. As recommended by the Somerset Board of Supervisors of Elections, Mr. Town Manager.
Yeah, all these have been discussed, I think, at various council meetings. I will also note that our distinguished. Chair of the board, Ms. Sheri Benjamin-Kahn, is with us, if anybody has any questions for her.
Okay, thank you, thank you, council president, sir, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Thank you, counselor Barr.
I have no questions.
Counselor Heller.
No questions.
Counselor member Redback.
No questions.
Before, I, I do want to join the town manager to thank the Board of Elections, Supervisor of Elections, along with the town attorney for working so hard. On updating our outdated charter when it comes to elections, and we're finally coming up with a state-of-the-art program. Are there any comments or questions from our residents or guests?
No.
Council, prepare to make a motion. I'm moving to approve the five amendments as recommended by the Somerset Board of Supervisors of Elections. Is there a second? Too late, too late, it's too late. Well, I'm, excuse me, it's too late, it's second. All those in favor? The next item, public hearing motion to consider adoption of resolution number, excuse me. Well, okay, I'm not here to get into debate with you, would you please have respect, would you, would you please have? Okay, you're out of order, you're out of order, the next item, public hearing motion. We, because. Okay, you're, the disrespect, the disrespect is, you know, we have, we have a process. Okay, okay, what is your, what's your comment?
We're not talking about those at all right now, we're talking about.
Okay, so would you please, would you please send some respect for me? Would you please send some respect for me, you're out of order, you're out of order.
All five, Board of Elections.
You're out of order. Thank you, I accept your apology. The next item, public hearing motion to consider adoption of resolution number 9221 to amend the town's election rules and regulations as recommended by the Somerset Board of Supervisors of Elections. Mr. Town Manager.
This, this is a resolution to adopt new rules and regulations in response to the charter changes which you just voted on.
Thank you, council president, sir, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you, council member Barr.
No questions.
Counselor Heller.
No questions.
Counselor member Redback.
No question.
Are there comments or questions from our residents and guests?
No.
Hearing none, council, you're prepared to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that the motion include a provision that the effective date of the resolution be tied to the approval of the charter amendments. We have to wait and see if any of those go to referendum petition. It makes sense for everything to take effect at once, we don't want to adopt the rules before the amendments take effect.
Okay, so when the motion is crafted, I will ask whether it's legally and technically sufficient.
Thank you.
Mr. President, are you going to make the motion?
Wait a second, sorry, I. I didn't understand that, so it would be a motion to adopt the resolution, amending the election rules. With the proviso that the effective date be the same as the effective date of the charter amendments. Charter amendments will generally take effect 50 days after adoption, but.
It is moved to adopt the resolution with the date of act of implementation to be the same as, wait, charter amendment, finally approved.
I'll second that, okay, great, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. The next item. This, public hearing motion to consider adoption of ordinance 9221, and ordinance to amend the code of ordinances to amend and clarify existing provisions. To require a wall check survey, to require a maintenance agreement for stormwater drainage systems, and to specify what must accompany a variance application. Mr. Town Manager.
Yeah, again, we've discussed these at several meetings, I will just note that one. Item that is still to do for us is to work out the, the language for the enjoyment of property, which we were discussing before. We, based on the discussion, that's unchanged with the ordinance amendment that we're adopting now, because it seems like there still needed to be some.
Right, so this point, we're not changing the sub-press.
Correct, yes, yes.
Okay, yeah, council president, sir, do you have any questions?
Sorry, that was my question, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, council member Barr.
No questions.
Counselor Heller.
No questions.
Counselor Redback.
Wait, just so I understand, so that means that the enjoyment part is being left in the code as it stands?
Correct, we're not changing that right now, and kind of earmarking it for future discussion, but getting everything else on the books that we recognize needed to be.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, did you have a question?
No, oh, sorry.
Okay, we just tried to run, okay, we have to order these meetings. So it's, it's not appropriate for someone to disrupt the process and barge into the question, so that's, so I'm sorry if I'm, if you took offense, but we. We try to run professional meetings, you know.
This is, my concern is about, of course, the variance provisions, the change to the variance regulations, the reason that I described earlier. Our code really shouldn't be in the disjunctive, it's not going to be legal to be in the disjunctive, because A must be met under Maryland law. The law says it, and the cases all say it, a variance must meet that standard of being extraordinary, peculiar, exceptional, a lot has to be, so it must be A. So to say A or B doesn't make sense, because it has to be A, and so you'd say, well, if it doesn't be A, then it can't be granted on B, so what's the point of B? Once it beats A, is B, so it should be conjunctive, and it's, and it's conjunctive in all the other jurisdictions that we found, with the exception of, which we either borrowed from, or they borrowed from us, because theirs is identical to ours, and equally mistaken.
Well, that's because it's the same town attorney.
I'm sorry?
That's because they had the same town attorney. And they lost, they, I'm surprised you found it, because they lost their. So they probably, they, I don't know what happened.
Well, anyway, they either took it from them, or they took it from us, but it's illegal that way, it cannot be on the basis of B, so it cannot be conjunctive, and the fact that it can't be conjunctive, right? And the thing that concerns me is removing this, we have, we have, it cannot be disjunctive. We have it as a subsection to this minimal reasonably necessary, which Mr. Holt is proposing, we move that, so it only applies to A, but where it is at two, it applies to both A and B, and as Ms. Rosenthal agrees, she tried to make the argument that both, you know, that this was the minimum reasonably necessary for both A and B. It tends to give some meat to B, so if we're going to have a code that's impermissively in the disjunctive, at least keep that. Very language in two, so it gives some meat to, because otherwise, you're in a circumstance where you're crafting and approving a code tonight, where you could give a variance based on B alone. Without meeting what's mandated in A, and without the minimum reasonably necessary applying to B, it would be totally unlawful granting of variance. I notice it's a little tricky, it's a little mind-bending, but basically what I'm saying is do not move that minimal reasonably necessary language to apply only to A. Unless you're going to, at the same time, make this a conjunctive variance criteria, which is what it should be, which is what it is everywhere. Rockville, Montgomery County, Kensington, Village of Chevy Chase, all the places I looked have conjunctive, it has to be exceptional, it also has to not adversely affect the neighbors, it also has to, it's all and, and, and. Some of them have five, six things, that's going to be all these things, because they're intended to be very narrow, so that's my first thing. The thing is, we didn't require, we're not changing the procedure, you can come in and you can get a there. Get in your tax council code, and we're not putting in the, you have to put the trees in, so that means. Variance, and you guys aren't going to see the trees, what are you going to do after the fact, you find out that variance impacted the trees? You have to have the trees in the, in the, in the application for variance, and similarly. Yeah, this is, this is a little different, but like, similarly, in the storm, in stormwater drainage plans, you have to have them, you can't be granting variance not knowing, I mean, it turns out that on our lot, there's no room for these dry wells. There's no, they want to, they say that we're going to put them, they didn't see, they didn't have the tree in the plan, so I think you should have.
Yeah.
If we give them a variance, they still have to go and get a permit, and then they have to come back here and get a permit, isn't that the time when we talk about stormwater management and all that?
Yes, so hold on a second, have you finished your comments?
I want to quickly say that what I'm worried about is people are going to come in with their whole building plans and variance, and they're seeking the grants based on this building plan, and they're going to be arguing very angrily to you, if you rent them the variance, and then they come in with all their. And you say, no, 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 you can't have a building permit, they're going to say, we spent a lot of time and a lot of money, you told us we could do this building, and there's going to be detrimental reliance arguments, and you're going to have a lot of angry people. I don't have a game, a horse in this game, is that the, what's that expression, I'm just telling you, we've been studying this, and this way that this is being changed is not right. It shouldn't be.
May I supplement this just a bit, just a bit? Laura said, I'm not going to repeat that, that A is essential for variance, so then what, if, then what value is B? Is it superfluous, and everybody knows, every lawyer knows, every court knows, that it is an unquestionable rule of statutory construction. That no series of words within a statute have no meaning, it must have meaning, so, so B must have meaning, so if A is essential, and B must have meaning, then you must have both A and B. I mean, that's just simple.
Okay, thank, thank you very much, okay, Mr. President, I'm going to turn it over to you to lead the discussion on consideration of this motion.
Asha, just like Ron, can you just provide a few thoughts or comments on the disjunctive? My understanding is because. It's an either or because of the qualifying statements, like B is only if it's not concerning stormwater drainage requirements. So if you have stormwater drainage requirements, then you have to satisfy A. If you're seeking a variance from the stormwater drainage requirements, you have to comply with it.
Oh, okay.
And, yeah, I can give you some brief points on the law, so the Levine's have cited land use articles sections 1-101 and 4206B2. So the land use article is divided into two divisions, division two applies in Montgomery and Prince George's County, division one applies in the other counties. Those code sections are found in division one, they're not applicable in Montgomery County. And that is because Montgomery County and Prince George's County are bound in parts by the. Regional District Act, park and planning, has exclusive zoning jurisdiction. So, you know, as noted in the Cromwell case, in the Rottling case, which relies on Cromwell. Those statutory provisions, which set forth the standards for variances. By only certain jurisdictions and only in non-charter jurisdictions, because those code sections also exclude. Charter counties from certain provisions. But the Cromwell case does say, however, looking back through time, there's a general rule that's been applied in area variance cases, and. Sort of a best practice, because if. A zoning body establishes a comprehensive zoning framework, chaos can result if officials are granting variances based on their discretion. Could undermine the whole zoning framework. Okay, here. I'm sorry. Here in Montgomery County. The zoning framework is adopted by the county council, sitting as the district council, town Somerset has no zoning authority. So, you know, the general rule may not apply here, there may not be chaos free if the town adopts a variance standard that's different than the Maryland statutory standard. Charter, non-charter counties in other counties. We have the ability not to adopt zoning regulations, but to adopt building regulations that are stricter than the counties. But that authority comes with some strings attached, we have to offer a waiver process, that's a waiver process, not a variance process. And that state law does not dictate what must be in our waiver process. Now, it may or may not be a good. Now, it may or may not be a good idea to follow the general rule as a best practice, but it's not legally required.
I try, um, thank you very much. I think I was asked, I was trying to ask him one narrow question. In this code we're looking at, we have or between the A and the B. The same Levine's are suggesting that it should be an and.
What Ron has said is that we are not required to do that under.
Not required to do what?
To, to, A is not necessary as part of our waiver process unlike other jurisdictions in Maryland, because we're part of the national Maryland and Prince George's County National Park Planning Commission area.
Okay, so.
It's partly because we, what we're officially doing is waivers, not variances from the code, so it is a different process. That's, I'm trying to summarize what you said, Ron.
Well, and just to say quickly, this is a technical correction variance. We have talked many times about a global cleanup that's needed for this provision, and B is uncommon and does dilute the the variance standard significantly because in my opinion, standard B is very easy to prove.
I mean, I I thought that was the whole point of a variance is that, you know, you have to prove that it is, you know, something incredibly, like, you're exceptional, like, that's different as to why you have to have a variance.
Right, but 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 for now, this is what's in our code. Are we changing and to or 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 to and?
No, but we would move the minimum reasonably necessary element to A so that would apply to A only and not A and B, because as written, in my opinion, it does not make sense. Right now, it says the variance must be for the minimum reasonably necessary to avoid the above conditions or situations. And the above conditions or situations applies only to A, doesn't apply to B. Because when you're proving a practical difficulty resulting from an unusual condition, you then must prove that there's what, how you're overcoming that practical difficulty resulting from the unusual condition. Okay, but under B, you're dealing with interfering or not interfering with light and air and sight lines, et cetera. You're not trying to overcome conditions or situations.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
No, you're, but you're.
Oh, I'm leaving.
You're leading the discussion.
Okay, um, Robin, do you have any, so so my thought here is, we need to clean this up. This is a step in the right direction. Not all elements of our steps might be correct, and we will learn as we go, and if we need to change it again, we can change it again.
Any suggestions? No.
Can't we just?
No, there's no discuss, please understand our process here.
Can we just add the ands?
How are you, how are you going to work on your ideas?
Can you please understand that we're trying to have a public meeting here? And that disruptions are not helpful. We have a process here, an orderly process.
So please continue. I think we could set up a subcommittee to help on revise your draft in this, because I don't want to walk a stone, I just want to move ahead. Robin, do you have thoughts, comments?
Uh, the stem of my head knows lots of. I I think we should pass this section, this amendment, as as we've written it, and we can further review it at a later time. I agree with that.
Okay.
Because we can't just add add an and right now.
I think we we risk running afoul of some of the other.
We we need to think it's logic statements that are turned into spin in there.
So, uh, Mr. Town Manager, what is the appropriate emotion for to be made?
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
Is that, is that twenty-two-one? Is that your motion, this councilor Barr?
That is my motion, yes.
Okay, is there a second? No, 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 okay, I saw Steve second, okay, is there discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor. Okay, all is, thank you. The next item, public hearing motion to consider adoption of ordinance nine twenty-two-two and ordinance to amend the code of ordinances to amend and clarify stormwater drainage requirements, to revise the definitions of one-year storm event, to require onsite infiltration rather than storage, and to exempt driveways having slope of five percent or more from the permeable material requirement, Mr. Town Manager.
These are, these are some of our sort of lessons learned from stormwater so far. Some of the just practical, technical changes that we should make, like, you know, if if the slope is greater than five percent, it doesn't, the permeable driveways don't really soak up any, so we're removing that provision, for example, but otherwise, happy to answer questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Council President, Councilor Barr.
No questions.
Councilmember Heller.
No question.
Councilmember Rehbeck.
I actually have one slight question on that. Sorry, um, so, so if you're building a new house, then can't you just then put in like a slope yourself and then say you can't do a permeable driveway?
It refers to the topography of your property as you bought it before you've done any work on it, so you can't try and work.
Okay, so you can't like.
Maybe you could over a couple of years without people watching or whatever, but.
Okay. Okay, that's my only question.
Okay. Comments from the audience? Mr. Levine, no comment. Ms. Levine, are you sure? Now's your chance. We appreciate, we appreciate your input, but it is in order. Thank you, but you have no comments. Okay, council, council.
Give me a chance to speak, I'll say this.
Yes.
I think that I think you need a memorandum of law so as to be able to address these issues, I suggest.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, council, you're prepared to make a motion? Council President, sir.
I I move we adopt ordinance nine twenty-two to to amend the code ordinances to make clarify stormwater drainage requirements, to revise the actions when you're storing venture products, identification rather than storage, and to exempt drives seven, seven, one from the permeable material requirement.
The second.
Okay, is there discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all is in favor, all is opposed, thank you. The next item. But the public hearing motion to consider adoption of ordinance number nine twenty-two-three and ordinance to amend the code of ordinances to amend and clarify stormwater drainage requirements, add definitions, require environmental site design be used for structural practices, and require a drainage plan for construction creating a hundred and fifty square feet or more of impervious coverage, Mr. Town Manager.
This is, uh, I maybe just want to ask clarification from the town attorney, so what we have here for adoption is unchanged from, I think, what was introduced, is that right? Or are there, are there changes to it?
Yeah, based on comments from Councilmember Kumar, I made two edits and shared those with the council. Councilmember Kumar noted that might not be clear that the town is adopting design manual with respect to E S D and structural practices, so I added a sentence on page four, subparagraph two, all E S D and structural practices shall be designed in accordance with the design manual, except as may be modified by the town council by resolution from time to time. And then in the next paragraph, I'm sorry, in response to a comment from Councilmember Barr, the provision related to additions, we've added a sentence to clarify that the same tiering applies to additions and new constructions, so we've added since the plan shall be designed in accordance with subsection B for A one and two.
Okay, I also want to make a statement, especially for the benefit of the Levine's. It might look like that these are being considered and passed like overnight, but these, all these amendments and ordinances have gone through an extensive process with lots of input from residents, particularly those that were members of the Stormwater Management Committee. So while your comments are are very well received, I do want you to know that these weren't just, these weren't just written by somebody and then they're rushing to pass it.
We understand that.
So I just want, I just wanted to make sure, and that we do appreciate, we do appreciate your your legal review and your your comments. But it's not, that, that there's a reason why they're passed a certain way because they make that decision based on all the input they receive.
I appreciate that. My comment is suggesting a legal memorandum, but really not with respect to the stormwater, with respect to the other one.
Okay, well, that we can talk about offline, because we're not, right now, we're talking something, anyway. Council President, sir, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Councilmember Barr.
No questions.
Councilor Heller.
No question.
Councilor Rehbeck.
No question.
Okay. Levine's, do you have a question? Do you have a comment? You, I'll give you five minutes. I'll give you twenty minutes, but it has to be addressing, it has to be addressing. And I would like to invite you to attend every time.
Yes.
We insist on.
I move we consider adoption of ordinance nine twenty-three to amend the code of ordinances.
Okay, you don't need to read it all, is there a second? Is there discussion, hearing none, all is in favor, thank you. And our last item is a discussion, public hearing motion, and this is an introduction. To consider introduction of ordinance eleven twenty-two-one and ordinance to amend the code of ordinances to require the installation of house numbers on existing and future houses and to require certification of compliance and connection with a building permit as recommended by the Public Safety Committee. Mr. Town Manager.
I think this is relatively straightforward as well. We discussed this at the last work session. Councilmember Rehbeck might have something to add, but.
Yes, now, I would like to say before I take questions that as you know, our current council procedures require that ordinance amendments be introduced by a vote of the council, and there is no public hearing required. However, based on input from some very engaged citizens, I will be recommending that in the future we change those, those so that there is a public hearing component to these kind of motions. Council President, sir, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you, councilmember Barr.
It's just, how finished is this ordinance?
Um, this was discussed in the work session.
So it it was discussed in the work session, I think the, I think the committee chair had a couple of clarifying questions, but I think the town attorney addressed them, and so.
And remember, this this could be amended between now and when it's voted on. Do you have any?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Heller. Councilor Rehbeck.
No.
Are you, council, you're prepared to make a motion?
Me?
Yeah.
Oh, God, I can't.
Just saying, all this is a move to introduce ordinance.
Ordinance eleven twenty-two dash one.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion, hearing none, all is in favor? Okay, thank you. And now our last agenda item is the town manager's brief, brief report.
Um, yeah, I'll I'll keep it brief. I mean, I I wrote down, you know, everything for you. I think the the thing that, you know, we got kind of a few major projects. One, I guess I'll just give a quick update on streetlights because we did hit a bump in the road there where our application got rejected from Pepco. I have gone back, gone through the grapevine sort of to find a consultant that works with Pepco to source these specific lights and is going to assist us with the application moving forward. Um, so I think hopefully that will help keep the ball rolling on that. And with with each, with each bump, we we our our timeline gets shorter, but I think we're still in a position to at least get a third of the town done this year. Hopefully do the second third as we had originally planned. I mentioned I have a few RFPs that will be coming, that I put out will be coming before you in the next couple of months. Got some sidewalk work and street work that I think we're going to do some, some minor safety changes, fixing stripping hazard in sidewalk, and there's a pothole on Dorset that we're going to try to get cleared up before the winter hits. And then the the other big thing I would just say is, um, next month, I expect that we'll have our audit done, so we'll have the presentation from the auditors on our fiscal standing for last fiscal year.
Thank you, council, president, sir, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you, councilor Barr.
Are you happy with where the website is now?
Yeah, I, we, we're moving forward with it, which I think is important. They're now doing the coding for it, and then we'll start doing some training in the next couple of weeks, so. I think we're we're making good progress now, yeah.
Thank you, councilmember Heller, do you have any questions?
So I just wanted to ask everyone a thing, well, there are signs for the communication. Come on, guys.
Yes.
Looking for the results.
We're getting them, people are, people are doing it.
Okay, thank you, councilor Rehbeck.
Um, yeah, can we add in just like a discussion of the streetlights and
At the work session.
And the Bethesda Fire Department representative at the work session for next.
Which we no longer have.
Sure.
Which we no longer have.
Oh.
They rewrote them, I have to, I have to, I'll take you. Okay, yeah, it's on next Monday, it's the twenty-first.
Oh, okay.
For some reason, I had the fifteen also.
Oh, no, I don't have it, I had it on the twenty-first.
Okay, so we'll put that on the work session agenda.
Okay, great.
These two items, because I talked to the chair.
Okay.
Okay, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Ron, we wrote in to thank you.
Now you can talk. You don't need to thank, you don't need to thank, you don't need to thank anybody because they put the facts to the law, and and nothing was done.